Slow down, and we might have a question, so write your questions on your paper as Steve goes, so that you don't forget what they are. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, so a bit of the history. Sanford has a long history of mineral extraction-related industries as our core businesses that are important to our regional economy. Sanford is unique in its geology and hydrology as it relates to the location of these valued mineral deposits on gravel sand largely sitting over our state-mapped, high-volume gravel-packed aquifers, serving as public drinking water sources. Site relations make Sanford's examination of mineral extraction important from a water preservation perspective, as well as balancing property rights and the rights of industries to extract and utilize these valuable resources. Sanford also has a long history of difficulties with the current five-year permit process and the site plan contained within our zoning chapter 280. Industry expresses concerns with current zoning and requested change. Planning was working on optional, on potential ordinance amendments with the planning board in 2020, but not timely per the industry's perspectives. Mayor Mistracchio in 2021 appointed a mineral extraction task force to address the concerns and provide a work product for the council's future consideration. First meeting of the task force was on June 14th of 2021. It was comprised of David Parent, our director of the Water District, he's here tonight; Chris Janest, industry representative, Chris is with us tonight; Mark Curtis, industry representative, he's with us here tonight; Kevin McKeon, representing conservation; Jack McCannum, representing the planning board; Paul St. Jean was a neighbor and a budding neighbor, very concerned about noise and dust; myself, and Director Beth De La Valley. Also contributing was Jamie Cole, our Director of Codes; Matthew Hill, our Public Works Director; and Matt Proventur, our Assistant City Engineer, who's in charge of site plan review. Opening that first meeting, we established the purpose was to put an ordinance, to put into ordinance minimum removal and reclamation standards in municipal procedures intended to regulate mineral extraction, to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare, and to minimize the adverse impact of extraction to citizens of the city, abutting property owners, and wildlife and natural resources; to protect the rights of commercial mineral extraction as a business activity, and to result in a clear and concise ordinance with standards that will not be onerous upon businesses beyond protections. We had a mission statement, which was to examine the mineral extraction standards and associated permitting in Sanford's ordinance and develop amendments, and/or propose a new ordinance with standards permitting or licensing, as well as improve upon the ongoing operations that relates to land use regulations and permitting. I started that process, I reviewed a minimum of seven other municipal ordinances looking for something of similarities. We ultimately started with the city of Augustus, being in similar geography, population, location of their mineral extraction to their urban core, and that they had wrote an extensive ordinance that had the framework to take us from a five-year permit to a annual or bi-annual license process. So we started with that as a framework. Amendments, we recognize that Sanford is unique, we're the seventh largest city in this state with superficial geology. We need more oversight than DEP provides to protect local interest, predominantly the water. Replacement of the five-year permit and single-site plan approval, plus annual license and inspection, was the trade-off. And the trade-off was more accountability. There had been recognized issues with the five-year permit violations becoming quite extensive over the five-year period, and becoming extremely expensive to retrofit. Industry requested specificity and reduction of planning board interpretation, that's a major point. So there's an extreme amount of detail in the standards in here. But as, when we get to those, you see many of those standards, they're listed, they're listed explicitly, but they're left to methods and means by the industry to decide on how they want to meet those standards. And then there were two areas of manufacturing that wanted to be recognized within the zoning that was not currently recognized, and that's beneficiation for both stumps and soils. Industry's starting concerns were with the five-year permit process. It was an uncertain, that five-year permit process was uncertain. Industry was seeking a greater level of surety for continued business operations. That gets to the heart of having a site plan under this process. Once that site plan and the operations manual is approved, you move to an annual license and inspection process, and you'll be able to operate under that site plan and operations manual until your, the pit is closed. There was a definite lack of specificity for reference standards in the ordinance, which were hard to address and left too much open to the planning board interpretation, uncertainty, and inconsistencies. They were seeking a long-term permit, license, site plan for surety and continuity of operations. They wanted DEP standards to predominate in amendments. So in the summary here tonight, you'll see an asterisk in front of some of the codifications that denotes points in which we have deviated from the DEP-known standards under chapter 378. They wanted to lessen the burden in permitting, and they wanted similar treatment to other industries. So to that end, the task force met seventeen times, averaging two and a half to three hours per meeting over eighteen months before passing a new draft ordinance, section chapter 280, to the planning board for review. So this is not an amendment of your current ordinance, this is a complete rewrite. It's a complete overhaul, it's a completely new draft. From there, the planning board held seven work sessions and public hearings on the draft documents until the planning director went out on medical leave. Before she did, the industry had provided a number of questions and concerns, very well documented, to which you have in your packet tonight a twenty-six-page response to the industry's questions and concerns. And I believe that those have been drafted into this new clean document. The director then finished the new ordinance while on leave. It has been received and reviewed, and a final public hearing was held resulting in the planning board's unanimous recommendations to pass the current draft forward to the city council with a recommendation for its future adoption as it stands. So in tonight's workshop, I'd like to give you a brief overview of what's contained in the new draft document, and give the opportunity to open it up for dialogue on those changes. If you're, in reference to what was in your packet, you have the clean copy of the draft ordinance, but it does have the underlying language as to what's new, and left the un-underlined languages as was old language from the prior ordinance. So definitions, we drill down on definitions, there's a definition in there for accessory use, because please remember that was not allowed before, but there are two accessory uses that are now allowed. Hall roads were defined as it pertains to open area, active area, and others. Mineral extraction abandonment was defined to be a key point in triggering the ultimate reclamation, if not done on an ongoing basis. At some point, you trigger that definition, that the pit is now abandoned and must be closed, or is inactive. There was definition for mineral extraction, active area, active footprint, and open area. The industry pushed back at one point in time that there was, it was too much in that, that it was confusing, but when you go through the ordinance, as we will here tonight, you'll see that you have to have those specific definitions, and by doing so, it can allow for a greater area to be open and active for mining than if we weren't reliant upon those definitions. Phasing is in there for the first time, it is defined, but it is not required. Please remember, it is not required. The reason the phasing remains in there is for some smaller operations, or even larger operations, they could use the phasing approach in their site plan to reduce the amount of performance guarantee that they'll have to have to do remediation, to do reclamation ongoing in their processes. So we felt that this was very important for the smaller operations versus the larger operations, which may not choose to use phasing. Stockpiles for active use and accessory uses were previously concerned, those are well-defined in there. Please note that when you get into the site plan and such, the stockpiles, you don't have to predict where they're going to be over the next twenty-year span that you might be mining in there. You simply have to define in your site plan where they are not going to be in relationship to natural resources, streams, setbacks, and others. Going into the next article, thirteen, conditional uses, sets the standards with specificity to be met by the future site plan that's to be filed, which is a separate section in there. So in this article, you'll find that the, it addresses the former, where does it say that? We heard that a lot from the industry about doing the five-year permit process. There were standards that were called out, they were not specific in the planning board, it was left to the planning board's interpretation as to how those were being met. I'm not going to read all of the numbers, but in the next section, 280, thirteen, five, there's a proposed extraction below the seasonal high-water table. Remember, at one point in time, we had a moratorium put in place around Laguniti, digging below the water table. So this is being addressed in here. It is an allowed use, it would require a DEP permit, and here's where the first of the deviations appear. So for our particular ordinance, the first asterisk you see here under 280, thirteen, five is maintain a thousand-foot separation between allowed limit of extraction and an existing or potential public or community drinking water source, and the extraction shall not negatively impact or delineated public water supply protection district. That's a higher standard than DEP has. Also maintaining a three-hundred-foot separation between the allowed limit of extraction and existing or potential private drinking water well, it's also higher than the DEP standard. So you're going to see, I believe, when I go through these points where we deviated from chapter 378 from the DEP standards, it's predominantly around proximity to the public drinking sources, the pre, the wells, the drinking water wells whereby the home, it was pre-existing and the home does not have the ability to easily connect to a public source. Those setbacks are greater than what DEP would call up for otherwise. Under 280, fifteen, dash, six, grandfathering, this was a major concern. All of our currently operating pits have pre-existing five-year permits, site plans associated with those. What's going to happen when they have to come into the new standards? 280, dash, fifteen, dash, six, A, two, addresses that as the elements of existing site plan approvals, including but not limited to setbacks and buffers, may continue to reflect the setbacks and buffers associated with those portions of the site plan. However, new or expanded areas shall comply with the standards that are part of this amendment. The next deviation is under 280, fifteen, six, C, new mineral extraction operations shall not be allowed in public water supply protection districts. So for that, those districts already mapped and are already set forward on protection, if you have a operation there now, you can continue to operate there under the old standards and the new standards, but you could not start a new mineral extraction operation inside of those previously established and mapped districts. Yes?
What happens if, under this grandfather, what happens if we buy land, the city of Sanford, for an Aqua Filter, or whatever it's called, and we're buttoned somebody that's already existing? Are we going to go above DEP for them now that we have an Aqua Filter and that we have buttoned them?
The setbacks that they have to adhere to are going to apply to what's already there.
Okay. Thank you.
If we, if we buy after the fact, that's on us.
Okay.
We, we being the city, the water district.
That's exactly my question, so thank you.
There was a lot of discussion around that. At one point, in these standards, there was, I believe, a three-hundred-foot setback, I think, for any place that there might be a residential or public well in the future. Well, that, that could be anywhere outside of the served district, so that's been taken out.
Right.
All right, 280, fifteen, six, F, standards, is an application for site plan approval for mineral extraction by the planning board shall be in compliance with the following standards. The applicant has reclaimed previously extraction areas so that the active extraction area does not exceed ten acres or twenty acres approved by the planning board in compliance with this section, that mirrors DEP. This allows for continuous reclamation as industry may provide as part of their operations manual. So in there, you can have phasing, you can have ten acres, you could have twenty acres, and you can have that rolling. Correct? As long as you're doing reclamation, reclaiming, doing reclamation as you go. You open up five acres, you reclaim five acres, you can continue your process, but it has to be pursuant to your site plan. It also allows for off-site materials and beneficiation and accessory uses. So reference to F-19, I don't want to cut in there, but. You must define where your stockpiles cannot go. So I thought this was a major, major point. It's much easier to say, here's the relationship to my wetlands, my setbacks, my buffers, and all of the other areas where the stockpiles cannot be, and then the rest of your site, you can have your stockpiles in there as long as they're providing, you've provided for those setbacks. Under article thirteen, you have conditional uses. 280, fifteen, six, F, two, reclamation in our mineral extraction closure plan. You have to restore to a similar prior, prior uses of what it was and before you started extraction, or uses that would be allowed in the zoning district. So there was a lot of discussion around that. How reclamation is done is left to the industry methods and means, there's a standard in there. You have to meet the catch, there's an inspection process. There was a lot of discussion, different operators achieve it in different manners. The DEP protection and guidelines for achieving cover and fertilization if necessary, those are referenced in there. That's right out of 378. And reclamation of haul and access roads unless they're to be used for future development, they are to be reclaimed. Under the phased reclamation, again, it's an option, but it's not required. The application is encouraged to reclaim a portion of the site each year. However, all reclamation shall begin no later than six months after the completion of each phase, if applicable, if you choose to do that, or a timeline approved by the planning board, completion of extraction, or abandonment of the project. That's why those definitions are in there. The site shall be inspected when regrading and planning is completed, and again, at one year after reclamation to ensure compliance with the plan approved by the planning board. Concurrent extraction and reclamation is highly encouraged, and this goes to being able to reduce the performance guarantees that are allowed in each phase if you're using that, and receives a certificate of completion on reclamation. So that will allow you to roll your acreage pursuant to your site plan. You can have, if you're having, if you're reclaiming on a regular basis, you can have fewer open acres, therefore you need a much smaller performance guarantee, and those forms are covered at the end of this document. Petroleum and/or hazardous product storage, this is right out of the DEP standards. You can refer to chapter 378, section 5A. Three-hundred-foot distance from private drinking water and a thousand-foot public distance from public drinking water sources for petroleum and hazardous product storage. You have to have a site plan and countermeasures shall be developed in compliance with the DEP standards. Spill control plan. You have to notice to the city, any spills, they must be cleared pursuant to the SBCC per DEP standards. Again, it's incorporated by reference. Buffer areas and setbacks, buffer areas and setbacks shall be shown on the site plan approved by the planning board in compliance with the following. Property boundaries, to minimize impacts on abutting properties, a setback of a hundred feet should be maintained from the edge of the extraction footprint approved by the planning board. There's a three-hundred-foot planned buffer requirement along the applicant's property lines for residents, which existed as of the date of the application for site plan approval. So again, that's going to be a very specific item to be looked at during the grandfathering aspect. The width of the required buffer may be reduced to no less than a hundred feet from the property line with written permission of the owner of the residence. There's a number of these occurrences in here that if you obtain the written permission and you record that in the registry of deeds, you can reduce your setbacks with that cooperating property owner. The next section provides access and protection of public roads. The application, the applicant shall demonstrate that it does not require improvements, same as other industries. At one point in time, there was a discussion around having the industry pay to build the road up, increase its load-carrying capacity. No other industry in our community has to do that, so that was stricken out. At one point in time, we had talked with one permitting process about a road impact fee. That was stricken out as well. It does require defining the haul, the preferred haul routes in the operations manuals, so if, if, if they have the ability to access a state aid road, they'll access there as opposed to a local, local road. As far as the roads are considered, the next section looks at the buffered with plantings on the sides closest to the residential property lines where the road is within three-hundred feet of an existing residence, unless the owner documents, again, they can reduce that down to a hundred with a cooperative agreement. The next section deals with groundwater impacts. The following standards shall apply, and this is where you really start getting into a lot of the work that was done for our community for the location of the gravel on top of the mapped aquifers. So the first section provides an adequate buffer for groundwater and allow for the filtration of impurities. Mineral extraction shall not be any closer than five feet above the seasonal high-water table. We talked greater than that, we'd never talked less than that, but the five feet is the DEP standard in chapter 378. You can go below the seasonal high-water table outside of the wellhead protection districts if you obtain the DEP permits and the other applicable standards in here. There should be a separation of two-hundred feet should be maintained between the edge of the extraction footprint and any private drinking water supply which is in existence prior to extraction and is to a point driven, driven or dug well and one-hundred feet from any private drinking water supply which is in existence to the, prior to the extraction. That is greater than the DEP standard. I believe it's a hundred feet for DEP. In the event of the extraction below the seasonal high-water table, the operator of a mineral extraction operation follows DEP standards and requires a DEP permit to perform, and that references chapter 378. and that references Chapter 378, Section 3B and all. Under the next section, the hours and duration of operation. No mineral extraction operation or associated activity shall be allowed on Sundays or the following holidays. That's as per current, I believe. Mineral extraction operations shall only be conducted between the hours of 6:00 AM and 8:00 PM. So we had a lot of discussion around the noise ordinance, and these are the, the times that the noise ordinance pertains to. There was much discussion of methods of means as far as the ability to mitigate noise, as far as creating, using your stockpiles to create buffers, using white noise backup alarms as opposed to the traditional backup alarms, and other methods and means to achieve this. Dust generated by the mineral extraction operation, including dust associated with traffic to and from the operation, shall be controlled by sweeping, paving, watering, or other best management practices for controls and emissions. Again, methods and means. Solid waste, including brush stumps, bark, slash, and lane clearing debris generated onsite should be disposed of in accordance with the applicable state and local laws. Stump grinding from mulch, wood chips, erosion control, and other use onsite is an acceptable form of disposal. We're not yet into the accessory use. Stockpiles and materials shall be screened from all public ways within 200 feet of the stockpiles and the property lines of existing residents within 300 feet of the stockpiles. So I should've flagged that, because that's not specific in Chapter 378, those distances.
Steve, on 28015-6F, hours and duration of operation, it has holidays listed on it. Why do, why do we tell a company if they can't work on a holiday? What, what is that one?
That's to protect the residential persons that are abutting the properties.
Is that, is that, okay. Long as you have a reason for the noise, for the holidays.
Jamie, that's, that's in the current ordinance, correct?
Current, sir. It's in the current noise ordinance, it's not specified in the current mineral extraction ordinance.
Yeah. Good.
There was a lot of these occurrences whereby, so when we're talking about noise, it didn't recreate the wheel. In existing noise ordinance, that's, that's in place, that's applicable to all of the industries, we leaned on that without creating different or new standards for this particular operation.
Thank you.
And remember all the complaints we got about the gun range?
Oh, yeah.
You know, holidays, too early in the morning, too late at night.
Yep. Okay, I just needed a reason, so thank you.
The next, the next one, 28015-6F13, excavation below the seasonal high water table should not be allowed in a state-mapped significant sand and gravel aquifer. You could, by my understanding, you could get a DEP permit to do that, but not with our particular ordinance because of, again, the protection of our highly valued groundwater aquifers. No below-grade extraction except for drainage ways shall be allowed within 100 feet of any public road. Adjacent lot lines of one or more owners shall be exempt from Section 15-6F4E if they agree in writing. So again, that's those setbacks, you can, you can offset those, agree in writing, recorded in the registry of deeds. This allows the industry to negotiate lesser setbacks with willing pre-existing abutters. Operation and closure of processing of brush, stumps, bark, and slash as an accessory use in conformance with the following standards. So this is significant because there was much discussion around beneficiary, stump grinding, bringing in soils, adding products to those, beneficiary and taking those back out as being a normal part of a mineral extraction operation for those that are doing work across the various, the state on road projects and such under that. So this, this brings those in as allowable accessory uses with the proposed standards. The processing of brush, stumps, bark, and slash shall not be allowed in water supply protection district. So again, that is unique to Sanford. Brush, stumps, bark, and slash processing facilities shall secure a permit from the main department of environmental protection pursuant to 38, Section 480-A at all. Again, that speaks to the NERPA permits, that's the Natural Resource Protection Act, water quality protections, which provides for 250-foot buffers to natural resources and/or wells. And here's the further deviation, 500 feet from all water supply wells and property lines of residences not owned by the facility operator or owners. This is in recognition that, in Sanford's situation, property owners that are pulling from a well, if you're gonna do this beneficiary or these accessory uses, you'd want, we'd like you to be 500 feet from those water supplies in recognition that if, if so contaminated, they don't have any other option. They can't connect up to the public water supply economically, they'd have to go to a sister system or some, something other than that. Operation and closure of topsoil processing as an accessory use is provided for.
Excuse me, Steve? I got a quick question. So beneficiary is not defined in this document or the red line, so is that something you could expound on a little bit?
Thought it was.
I don't, I didn't see it.
It's not defined in this document, but it is defined in Chapter 280 of the ordinance.
Okay.
So beneficiary is when you, you, you might bring, you might take products that are on, that have been extracted in the pit, blend them together to create another product that's either going to be sold offsite or to be utilized for reclamation. It could be beneficiary, you're bringing allowable materials in from offsite in to blend materials with it to take it back out for sale and/or to use as part of the closure process. So you're, you're, you're taking product, you're adding a product to it, and you're, or a process to it, and you're increasing its value.
A good example.
Oh, I just wanted to see.
A good example of beneficiary is, it's a pit that doesn't have a lot of rock in the mineral, so they bring in rock to make a crushed gravel product. So they take the, the coarse sand from the, from their pit, bring in rock from a different pit, and make a gravel product. That, that's a, one of the most common forms of beneficiary. So it's not in these documents, it's actually in the full Chapter 280. These documents just list the changes to 280, not, not the whole ordinance. But it is defined in Chapter 280, in the, in the big Chapter 280.
I, I looked that up multiple times myself, so. So also, topsoil processing is not allowed in the water supply protection district, but topsoil processing shall only handle clean soil free of contamination, shall not be sourced from sludge-spreading sites, so that gets into your PFAS, all right? And shall be in compliance with, with main DEP protection regulations concerning PFAS and other contaminants. Again, 500 feet from all water supply wells and residences not owned by the facility operator. Optional conditions of approval, the planning board may impose other reasonable conditions to safeguard the neighborhood and city, which may include those in the following areas. Again, speaks of hours of operation. Type and location of temporary structures, which should have to be included in your site plan, and routes for transporting materials. Inspection letter of compliance, this is where we start looking at the license inspections pursuant to Chapter 149. So I haven't brought 149 to you at this point in time as far as the cost structure or the other elements, because I'm, I want to wait to see what amendments are passed as far as this document is concerned, and then we can bring you the 149 in Chapter 120, which is the fee itself. So following inspection, the code enforcement officer shall issue a letter of compliance, provided the permit holder has not violated this chapter nor deviated from the site plan approved by the planning board. If the code officer determines that the permit holder has violated this chapter or substantially deviated from the site plan approval, approved by the planning board, he or she shall issue a letter of noncompliance. Both a letter of compliance and/or a letter of noncompliance shall be provided to the planning board, the planning director, city engineer, city clerk, and the permit holder. The code enforcement officer shall issue an immediate stop work order for a specific violation, except for remedial action until such time as compliance is achieved. We spent a lot of time talking about, you're not gonna, not, not going to shut down the entire operation, the notice of viola, the stop work order is gonna be specific. So if, so let me, let me use an example. If your petroleum storage, something's wrong with your petroleum storage, okay, you can't use that, it's in violation, you can't use that, you can continue mining and such under that, but you need to fix that before you can go back to that utilization. Unless it's something, Jamie, can you give me an example where it's something that's so overarching, I would say something they've excavated below the five-foot datum line without a, without a permit to do so, that would be a stop work order on the entire operation or for that area. I'll leave that to you.
Yes, I would agree. If, if you have an active operation and for various reasons, sometimes they, they get off of the elevation of the pit. Some of these pits are half a mile long, and if you start out at a .01% grade, by the time you're half a mile across, it's, it's into the water table. So if they're all of a sudden digging along and, oops, there's water, that, that's gonna be an immediate problem that needs to be solved immediately. We've had cases in the past decade where the seasonal water table has actually risen, so they, they actually thought they were okay, and then all of a sudden, oops, the water appeared. So it doesn't happen often, and we would only use the immediate stop work order on very serious things that have to be addressed immediately.
So I had in my notes on this next section, 15-6J106, the, the existing operations, we need to address the period for new site plan and licensing herein. So it calls it out within a two-year period or after the expiration of the most recent five-year permit currently issued. So we talked about pros and cons of which way to do that. I believe the stronger of the pros on that was they would continue to operate under the current five-year license that they have. After that period, they would come in, well, before it expires, they would come in, do their site plan in their operations manual that would be under the new standards, have that issued, and then they would continue under that site plan and operations manual for the definite period of the, the entire operation unless they file for an amendment. We have, what, one or two operations that we have on hold right now pending to see if this is going to go through or if we're gonna stay with the current five-year permit so they don't inappropriately incur cost, time and cost until we know what this process is. So they've been put on hold. Our next Article 16 is site plan review. First section talks about scheduling, submission fee, and review procedures. You must show the location of all proposed access roads, temporary structures, including but not limited to fueling, crushing, screening, grinding, and processing activities. Proposed provisions for drainage and erosion control. Other information necessary to locate and indicate the physical characteristics of the proposed site and the operation, including but not limited to wetlands, surface water bodies, and sensitive natural resources in environmentally sensitive areas. You have to provide a reclamation or closure plan showing how the site will be reclaimed in accordance with the performance standards of this chapter. Again, phasing is an important option that can limit your performance guarantee and help you with your reclamation. General description of location of the imported materials and/or materials relocated from other portions of the site have been or are proposed to be used to remediate areas of noncompliance within the site plan approved by the planning board or to reclaim areas. Planning board requires the submission of a hydrogeological study prepared by a qualified geologist with specialization in hydrology who is licensed in the state domain to determine the effects of the proposed activity on groundwater movement, quality, water supply wells, surface water bodies, water quality, and sensitive natural areas within the general area of extraction. So that's currently done under the five-year permit as well. Groundwater monitoring plan prepared by a qualified geologist with specialization in hydrology who is a licensed state, licensed by the state, including all required components of the monitoring system, and a description of past extraction and reclamation activity on the site and areas proposed to be extracted and reclaimed over the life of the mineral extraction operation. Performance guarantees, this is the amount may be set by the planning board based on the recommendation of the city engineer and should take into account the character and nature of overburden, future suitable use of the land, and cost of grading and reclamation required. There's much more to that section, but again, it goes back to methods and means. So again, you can phase, you can not phase, you can do reclamation on an annual basis, you can wait until the end. It all depends on the site plan that you have approved. Inspections, the inspection fee for mineral extraction operations shall be based on the character and nature of the overburden, future suitable use of the land, cost of grading and reclamation required. The inspection fee is due no later than the day of the inspection. Failure to pay the fee results in an automatic notification of noncompliance. Amendments to approved plans, there are minor modifications to site plan approved by the planning board if at any time it appears necessary or desirable to modify the site plan. Mineral extraction before or during the, the extraction, the city engineer is authorized to approve minor modifications due to unforeseen circumstances, including but not limited to encountering hidden out props of bedrock and natural springs. Performance guarantees under Article 17. The first section I'm referencing was the submitted of the application for final development approval. The applicant shall provide for one of the following performance guarantees. They can provide a certified check, a performance bond, an irrevocable letter of credit, or any other performance guarantee as may be approved by the city manager. And we have had those other forms of performance guarantees provided that were very unique documents, have approved those in the past. The conditions and the amount of the performance guarantee shall be determined by the planning board with the advice of the city engineer or public works director. It gets into the requirements of the chapter. And each five years after the start of construction, updated proof of the construct, cost of construction shall be submitted to the city engineer. If the amount, current performance guarantee is inadequate to cover the cost, the total cost of construction, the applicant shall provide a new performance guarantee in the form that they choose. The duration of that guarantee is for the life of the operation until they've closed, closed that up. Provides for release of the performance guarantee, so any prior release of any part of the performance guarantee, the planning director, the city engineer shall determine to the satisfaction that the proposed improvements meet or exceed the design and construction or reclamation requirements for the improvement. The city shall require the permit holder to provide an acceptable guarantee until the code enforcement and city engineer find that the reclaimed landscape meets the requirements for one full year thereafter. So that is the, as fast a summary as I could provide for the overview of the elements that are in there. There is a lot of specificity in there because, again, that was one of the major, major concerns that was before us, was standards were called out, and where is that in your document? So those are in there now. I believe I pointed out all of the areas that I was able to note where we deviate from DEP standards, and it predominantly focuses around the water protection aspects. I'll leave it at that. So thank you.
Now I'm gonna pass out the test to see if you understood what was going on. I think we could probably at least go to kind of break it up, sections by sections, and, and I'm probably gonna start. Is there any questions on the definitions? Jonathan?
So for mineral extraction.
Could you list the page and the line that we're talking about?
Sure. Page one, line 25, that's section mineral extraction. It talks about removing sand, gravel, clay, rock, peat, and other like material, and then down at the bottom, it says this definition does not include rock quarries. Can somebody kind of help explain that?
To date, we don't have rock quarries. Nor, nor do we anticipate, so.
So are we defining rock quarry somewhere? Because this defines removal of rock under mineral extraction, but then it says it's not, it's saying. not, it's saying it's got a rock quarry under something else.
Is that also why the DEP has a blasting section but we don't? Because we don't blast?
Yeah, we didn't anticipate in the right of this, any quarry, rock quarry.
Okay, so any rock removal would just be with gravel and loose gravel, that kind of thing?
So a rock quarry is a solid mass of rock where you blast it, you haul it, you crush it. Rock that comes out of a mineral extraction pit is mineral. So a quarry is, like if you go to Northport Pike is there, if you look, it's a 200-foot tall wall of rock that they just keep blasting chunks off of it. So we don't have any of those operations. Our minerals in Sanford, I'm not going to say we don't have ledge in Sanford, but we don't have, we don't anticipate that in the near future, we're going to have a rock quarry request. Sanford is unique that we have very good gravel mineral, not necessarily huge deposits of ledge that's.
Okay, thank you.
And Dave, was that what you were going to say too?
Yeah, Jamie got it.
Okay, good.
If you really wanted to know, you could ask one of these guys.
They're probably like nah, all right. So do you guys have any questions or comments on the definitions? Are we all set with that? Okay.
I guess you're there.
Right there is good.
Just make sure it's on.
Sounds like it's on. So Mark Curtis, Gormson and Gravel, I appreciate the opportunity. I guess what you're asking us for is a line-by-line review of this ordinance is what it sounds like.
No, that's probably the least thing I'm asking is a line-by-line. If you are making a comment on a page, I would like to know what page and what line you're referring to so we could all follow along. But what I'm asking about is for the definitions, are the definitions clear? Is there some that you absolutely can't live with because it doesn't make sense to you or, you know? I know in the response that was given that was sent to Beth and there were some responses, it made a comment that they didn't, they were asking Augusta for information about the definitions and how they were working. And I didn't see any feedback after the fact that they said they hadn't heard back from Augusta. So I didn't know if you guys have any concerns or?
The reason--
Oh, you did hear back? Okay. And how were they working for Augusta, the definitions? Are these now changed? Are they the same? Okay.
The reason you didn't have any comment after that from us is because we never saw a draft of the ordinance after the last planning board meeting. We were told at the last planning board meeting that we all attended, that we would receive a draft of the ordinance and have three weeks to review it and provide comments. So the comments that you do have are not well put together, not a good reflection of the actual ordinance that was drafted. And so, and I think that's, I mean, am I mischaracterizing that in any way, shape, or form? I think that's the problem is that's why there's a disconnect because there was this massive amount of time and then a draft popped up. Chris, who has been part of this community and his family's been part of this community for a long, long time, wasn't even part of the notification that went out to know that that was happening. He found out from us because I happened to be on the list and that's why there's frustration on our part because, and as I said in my letter, I definitely, I spent months, I spent years of my time trying to affect this change. I felt personally, I'm only going to speak for myself, that I was speaking to a brick wall. The person who drafted this ordinance, this is not a personal attack, but that person did not, was not an unbiased source on this particular issue. And it's clear to me by reading this ordinance that the bias exists and didn't take a lot of our comments to heart to try to make it simple. I know how hard everybody on that task force worked. Steve Buck, Jamie, Jack McAdam, I mean, people put their, an immense amount of time into it. I did, Chris did, we put a ton of time into it. What's been produced by this is not something that is, I don't think it's good for either, for any party. I mean, I read so much in there that leaves some, there's so many things in there and I have example after example after example and I could go through each and every one of them, but you guys don't want to be bored with this. I mean, and nothing against you, you mentioned how hard it was for you to read it and understand it. It shouldn't be and doesn't need to be that difficult. We work in many other communities where the ordinance is very simple. We know the standard, we operate by the standard, and we go about our business. We don't have an immense amount of problem with the ordinance. We want to be in compliance. That's where we want to be. I think, and I think Jamie, for the most part, can tell you that the operators that exist in this town, and even if he's talked to other code enforcement officers, will find that there is an immense amount of compliance with those ordinances. We don't want to be out of compliance. It's way easier. The problems that we're going to have with this ordinance, one, we simply asked for a five-year, the change in the five-year renewal. That was it. And then it opened Pandora's box and it changed everything. There is so much in here, like 300-foot setbacks from potential wells. Okay, well, that's not something, how can I predict where a well might be in the future? I can't. And if we have somebody who doesn't like gravel pits beside us, guess where they're going to plant their well? Right on the property line. And that's going to take up 300 feet of our property so that they can have a well just despite us. Again, there should be, it should be clear that they have rights and we have rights, right? I don't want to take away anybody's right to be able to drill a well. They should be able to drill a well. And it should be our responsibility to make sure that any activity that we do on our property does not disturb that well or disturb the quality of that water. I simply asked during the process, why does that need to be in there? Do you have a situation where our type of use has contaminated a well 300 feet away on an abutting property? Nobody could quote one for me. Didn't happen. Definitely didn't happen in Sanford. Hasn't happened in any gravel pit I've ever been involved with. Chris, Larry, Matt. So there's this perceived situation that doesn't exist and now we have to protect for it. Doesn't exist in state statute, wasn't in the Augusta statute. Some of the things that we talk about is these 300-foot buffers for a new gravel pit. Now, I can review this entire ordinance for how it's going to affect our operation currently, but that's different than wondering how it's going to affect a new operation. Gravel pits don't last forever. We have to go where the mineral is, right? I can't, I can't create a gravel pit out of whole cloth. So unlike a farmer, if you've got terrible land, you can continue to amend that land until you get good, solid land that you can grow apple trees on or corn or whatever you want to do. We can't do that. And in our industry and in our communities, we need this material. Everything, every road you drove on is made out of this material. Every development that the city of Sanford wants to do needs this material. We have to go where the material is. If we, if we limit it with no, there has to be a balance. We understand the balance. We want to protect everybody else's property. We've got no problem with that. But if we overbalance that protection, then it drives the cost up for everybody, for every project. I'm looking at this, I'm hoping that's a, that's a new road that's getting rebuilt right there. It looks to me like it's a beautiful road plane. Am I right? Is it somebody rebuilding?
That's part of our--
That's awesome.
That's part of the $25 million that we got that we're redoing.
Yeah, gravel, concrete, stone, all that stuff. And when you make it hard to get that in this city, it's got to happen somewhere else. That job, without those resources here in the city, doubles in cost. Your dollar doesn't go as far. I'm not here to, I mean, I hate to stand here and speak against my own work, right? I mean, like, we put our blood, sweat, and tears into that thing. Steve worked his butt off, you know, really balancing things. Steve did a spectacular job, but then once it got out of that committee and it got to be drafted, it just kept veering and it veers so hard off to one side, it's just very difficult for us. And again, I'll speak for myself, I'd let those guys speak for themselves, but I can't imagine trying to come in and get a gravel pit approved that gives 300-foot setbacks from a resident. It says in there that if you, if you can see the extraction footprint, we got to continue to plant trees. You know what happens around here around this time of year? The leaves fall off the trees. I can see all kinds of things that I forgot were even there last year, right? And so now I've got to put up, Jamie's going to get a phone call that says, hey, I live in the house that's, you know, 295 feet from an extraction footprint and I think I can see it. Got to go out and plant trees or put up a fence or put up a berm or-- That's not a reasonable standard to try to meet. How am I, and what's so wrong, and beauty's in the eye of the beholder, what's so wrong with a gravel pit? I mean, I agree, it's not the prettiest thing, but I got to tell you, it's a necessary thing. And if we started picking off things that somebody doesn't like or I don't like, I want a buffer from all kinds of things. You know what I mean? I don't want to see certain things. And I'm sorry, I don't want to take up any more of your time, but I really appreciate the chance to let you know how I feel.
Well, that's why we're here tonight is to hear from you guys.
Thank you.
And you're Mark, right? Did I get the right? I have to say that I did notice what, with my limited knowledge, even I picked up on page four, not, line nine and 914, about them saying potential public or community drinking water. And I said, we had to add some wording even to that because that was just, could be anywhere, anywhere. And so I said, you had to add previously designed for potential use as a public water or a private water source. So you have to be pre, you can't have your business and then all of a sudden have a well you were right, somebody could put. And I saw that too with my limited knowledge, so I agree with you, that was a problem. Steve, did you want to make any comments to this veering off course? Are you still working on your other thing?
Yeah, the documentation that Beth, the conversation she had with the planning director in Augusta about the ordinance, there's nothing in the documentation that talked about the preference to the definitions.
Okay. Nothing in their document that, their research?
No, you, the question was, did the definitions work well for the city of Augusta?
Yes.
I don't have anything in her documentation.
Oh, that answered, okay. All right.
Steve?
Maura, hold on a sec. We'll get right to you, Jamie.
I just want everybody to think, as we're discussing this, this is a 26-page document. State performance standards are six. Lyman ordinance is six. Vitterford ordinance is six. Westbrook ordinance is one and references the state. I just randomly chose a few. I'm afraid, I'm a little worried ours is overwritten and over-complex. My goal, protect Dave's water supply. I think that's one of the most critical things we could be doing in writing this ordinance and make it clear and concise and make sure it reflects state law in the, at the very least. That is why, I mean, people have asked why I've been on this. I can see it. I've done zoning for years and this is an overly complicated ordinance, much like our sign ordinance, which people get so frustrated reading and they can't understand. I want clear, concise rules that people are willing to follow. Again, Dave, your water is my main priority in this, our water. I shouldn't call it yours because you provide it for all of us. I have a problem passing this complicated of an ordinance. And I, I know people worked really hard. I know people spent a lot of time on this. This is so overwritten and I'm tired of Sanford overriding our ordinances.
Yeah, I want to, I just kind of follow up on that a little bit. In the beginning, when we got together with the planning board, it was our, you know, understanding we were going to sit down and explain or listen to the planning board, listen to the city, what their concerns were, and made sure that we could explain very well from the DEP ordinance or most ordinances in most cities or towns so they could understand what each section meant and how they could depend on that to reinforce, you know, their concerns or protect their concerns. So we brought in a third-party consultant, Ted Johnson from, was it Resource Policy Group? Resource Policy, top in the field. And he could explain every single thing and why every law came to be. And we presented this at the planning board and he was allowed, was it five or 15? I don't, it was like 15, I think, minutes to explain it. And, I mean, you can take 15 minutes in--
It's a chart over there.
Yeah. And, I mean, it was, it was quite, it was resisted quite heavily. So I don't know how we can write, we went forward, I mean, we just had to keep going forward. That's the cards we were dealt. And so I don't know how we can move forward writing something so complex when the first ordinance was never fully understood by anybody in the planning board at all. I don't think anybody really understood the initial one or the existing one for that matter. So it was our chance to really educate everybody and we thought that after everyone was well educated, that we'd be able to address this. And we felt, I think we feel, no one was really educated properly from our industry before we got to write it. So, but this was very early on. I believe Steve came in much later and, you know, everyone, I think we worked together well, but it just, it just got busy. It got really busy. And I don't think everyone really understood what it is. So it'd be great to have that opportunity, but, you know, here we are. So that's my only comment on the whole thing. I guess regarding what you see as maybe complex in the other cities and towns. There is protection for almost everything of concern, but I think it needs to be explained.
Okay, by, you're saying it needs to be explained, like this ordinance needs to be explained or understanding?
I think understanding the protection that the city has through even just the state ordinance and laws and that the rights that the city and the towns have to shut people down if it's not followed. Or that the understanding of the reasons that setbacks and rules and laws are in place to protect water, you know, natural resources or animals and wildlife, they're all in place and if, they need to be first explained, I guess. They're all there and they can be enforced by the cities and the town have the ability to do that. And we needed to explain how they can do that, which they have every right to do and they can involve the state. And they have, they have power there to stop things that are going sideways or they're not being done lawfully. So it just wasn't, I don't, we never really got that chance to do that.
All right. Thank you. Anne?
So just--
Hold on one moment. Jamie had a hand up a while ago and I skipped right by him. So just one second, Anne. Go ahead, Jamie.
I was just clarifying something Steve just brought up. Mark had asked about the definitions. Steve said he reviewed the responses from Augusta. There actually was a comment about the definitions in the response. Beth asked, how have your definitions, which are different from the DEP, been working? The answer was, working fine, industry has adjusted, and the definition slash ordinance was needed to meet the city's needs. That was Augusta's response to the definitions.
Okay. All right.
So before Chris sits down, I just want to make sure I'm understanding. Are you commenting that there's existing structure and regulation at the state level that provides protections, meaning some of this ordinance may not be necessary because those protections already exist?
I believe most of the protections that the city has concerns about are certainly protected by the state first and foremost. There's probably a few things that are specific to Sanford. Groundwater is a very good thing and we did recognize that, but we recognize that everywhere. Sand and gravel equals water anywhere in the state. Sand and gravel is excellent water. It's a great filter. The industry knows this and does fairly well at addressing this and dealing with this. And I don't know if there's many cases where, apart from the turnpike that took away our pit messed it up, so. So, the state is the one that broke the law, not us.
And we probably should loudly point that out, too, because even I've heard people say, well, they, they had a problem, and then you dig into it, you find out it wasn't you guys, it was...
It was the state.
It was the state.
And, and, you know, I'd like to comment that Dave, Dave really, Dave really did explain the hydrology and, and everything that happened in that, so that we really understood the effects of how something can go wrong. So he was a really good resource. Sanford has a good resource there.
All right. Dave, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
I do. So, when we lost our new damn well, in, in a pit that they took from the Janass family and gave them pennies, I mean, we'd been in negotiations to buy that property, and this was a while ago, so it doesn't sound like much money, but I think we were down to about $89,000 for the property, plus we were going to do some things. The state took it for like 11 grand, or something. That was crazy.
Wow.
That project that destroyed our well was a project that was promoted by the DEP. They told us it was going to improve our water quality. We hired the best hydrologist, who was also a P in the state, who countered that and said, no, you will destroy this well. DEP pushed it through anyway, and used enough pressure that the drinking water program did not dare to advocate for us. The main DEP is not a friend of public drinking water supplies, and that's common knowledge. So, know that right now. If you're going to protect public drinking water, you need to do it at the ordinance level. DEP is not interested in that. That's, and I'm, I'm sorry if I get a little fired up about that, but that was a, gosh, that was probably three years of us fighting them not to do it, and then 12 years of my life and my career, fighting the main turnpike authority to replace that source of supply, so the citizens of Sanford would not have to come up with about $5 million to do that. So, and that was successful. But that was, I hang that right on the DEP.
Well, Dave, I'm glad you're that passionate...
Don't tell me they're here to protect me, because they're not.
And I'm glad you're that passionate about the water supply, because I live here, I drink a lot of water, and so I appreciate, you know, your taking care of that, and to make sure that wasn't our cost, you know, for our taxpayers.
Yes.
Yeah, I think that was very important.
It went well, neither.
Also, for all of you guys sitting there, one of the comments I got from the citizens was, they made a comment, well, you're going to have people who have a financial interest in this making these decisions. Who else would spend that amount of time but people who have a financial interest in a product? That's why businesses get involved in stuff we do on Main Street. They get in, you know, you know, how your, outside of your building looks, because it's going to promote your business. So the same way with you guys. Of course, you, you have a financial interest in it. It, it's important. Our family is a chiropractic family. We have an investment in health. So, any health things that come up, we're involved, we're right there with it. But we do have a financial interest. Why would we be in the business? You're, you're not going to do the business for free. Hold on one, one moment, Mark. Yep. Chris?
John.
Chris and John? Okay.
Pete and John.
Ah, Pete and John, sorry. Go ahead, Pete.
So, let's get the elephant out of the room here. How many wells has mineral extraction killed in Sanford and, and Springvale? Has, has, has there been, have we lost drinking water from property owners? Anything like that? So this is what started all this? Did we lose drinking water wells?
We did. The one we just talked about was lost, but it was a complex situation in the way that it happened. But protection of drinking water is not done like that. You don't say, none have been destroyed, therefore, we don't need to do this. You do not do it like that.
Sure.
So, we work to protect the, the drinking water supply. I don't, I don't think I've got much pushback from these guys. When Gorm Sand and Gravel bought the pit that's right across from one of our new supplies, we had an agreement with the former owner that we would allow mineral extraction to happen there. And we both started about, about the same time, actually. Although Mark and I haven't always agreed in the start, we've always worked things out. In fact, we had a, we, we were telling this story the other day, we had a time that we were at loggerheads in front of the planning board, and, and it was getting ugly. And I stood up, and it was when, when Tommy Shaw was still alive. And I said, Tommy, you and Mark, come to my office and sit down with me and Keith tomorrow morning at 7:30, without any lawyers and anybody else, I guarantee you, we'll solve it. We did. 15 minutes, we solved it. So, we've had a great working relationship with, with everybody here, I believe. I, I think some of the setbacks that are bothering them are, are with the potential water supplies, the 300-foot, that's the minimum for any community water supply, which might be a restaurant, it might be a campground, things like that. That's why that was put in there. There's reasons why things were put in there, for everything that's in there. And I, I think those are the things you ought to talk about. Specificity was asked for. I've, I've been doing this a very long time. And if I had a dollar for every time somebody from a, from a mineral extraction operation said, show me the ordinance where it says I got to do that, I'd be a very wealthy man today. So, two ways to write ordinances, and I should let Erin get this top, because this isn't, this isn't mine. You can write a very short ordinance that gives you the authority to, to do certain things. You know, one line can give you authority to, to require 30 pages worth of, of, you know, requirements on these guys. The other way you can do it is you can write it very specific, and say, here's exactly what you have to do, here's exactly how you have to do it. So somebody can walk in and read that, and say, oh, that makes sense, they asked me to do this here, they asked me to do this here. It's simple. And it gets rid of those arguments. And that was asked for early on, I, I think it's been a very long time. I don't know if, I, I wouldn't like to see the city go back to the other version, because then we're going to have the same type of arguments at the planning board level. You know, show me where it says I can do it. Well, here's the line. Well, that line doesn't say you can ask me to do that. Well, no, but it gives us the authority to ask you to do many things. So I think specificity is good. The change in definitions, I, I thought, I actually thought it was great, because it, most people don't understand gravel pits. They literally don't understand them. So when somebody comes in, like Mark, and says, I need 30 acres to run my gravel pit, it, it's hard to grasp that. But if you go and visit his gravel pit, and you see the different beneficiation, things that he's doing, Mark's creating a, a concrete aggregate, he's creating an aggregate that's from recycled asphalt. He's got piles of every DOT spec gravel you could think of, he's got a loom operation with wonderful loom that you can buy barely inexpensively, not, not advertising for Mark here, but if you complain about loom, you can get it right in town. So, there's a lot going on. There's the haul roads, and Sanford used to just say, open space, here's your limit, and everything is open space. This ordinance has no limit on open space, none. What we came down to is, we said, well, we should limit how much you're digging a hole in the ground, so your active excavation. But then if you have stockpiles, haul roads, loam processing, other processing, wood processing, that shouldn't count against you. You know, you're using that space for something, and that's not, you don't need that. So there's no limit on open space in this. And that means that argument of somebody having too much open space goes away now.
Yeah.
And I, I just, I think it's wonderful to have the specificity in there, so the planning board can look at it specifically, see what they're supposed to do, so they don't ask these guys to do unreasonable things, that they, you then hire an attorney to look at it and come argue it. It's everyone's spending money that they don't have to spend. I, I think. That's my view. But you can go back to the simple ordinance.
Well, my concern is, the same dump truck of gravel today, whatever grade you have, if we put this in right now, right, because it'll protect the water, we all got that, what the hell happens to the, to, to all the construction companies? They're going to get higher pricing. That's what I'm worried about, cost per square yard for the gravel pit. Is it worth them being in Sanford? Are we going to lose jobs? Are we going to lose businesses? Because I'm not for that. I'm for protecting water, that's why I, I appreciate you. Well, we got to balance this. We got to make sure we don't drive those four out of here responsibly. I'm, you know, if they were evil and they were killing all that drinking water, I'm, I'm voting to stop it, right? Obviously, to protect the city's...
I'd like to see it save them money. These, these five-year renewals we're talking about, every one of these guys knows, we, we dreaded them.
Yeah, they don't like it.
So, they cost them a lot of money, they cost the city a lot of money, because it was a lot of time. Jamie's been through a bunch of them as well. Erin hasn't been through. So, let's try to save her soul here.
Oh, we'll get through this.
But if, if we can just do one approval, which is the way you do every other business in, in town, pretty much.
Yeah.
And then do a licensing, and never have to go through those horrible processes again. I mean, that was, I think that was the primary driver to doing all this, right?
It was.
Yeah. Getting rid of those.
Now, is that taken out of here? I thought it was taken out.
No, that's part of it.
That is part of this, still.
Oh, yes, that's in there.
All right. And, so, Dave, I'm a little unclear, as are you, in the opinion that this is overdone, and that we need to find some type of middle road?
I'm, I'm honestly not. I like the specificity. I don't, if, if I never have to sit there and, and sit through three planning board meetings in a row of a planner trying to explain why they asked them to do something, I, I will be a happy guy, because that's what happened before. If you put the specificity in, you can't ask for things that aren't there. And it's obvious when you ask for something why you did, because it's there. Now, if there's issues with some of the things that are in there, they're talking about the buffers, talk about those.
Okay.
Because, as I said, there are reasons behind them, and you may not agree with those. If you don't, you don't, if you do, you do, but get those reasons out there.
Mayor, could we ask that same question of both Erin and Jamie?
Yes.
I would like their perspectives.
Okay.
If they're willing to share.
So Jamie will go, and Erin, I know, you're the newbie.
Good. Questioning the question.
Jamie, go ahead.
The question is, do I feel it's over, overdone? I'm on the page with Dave. Part of the discussion early on was, our current standards for mineral extraction is two pages long. And in them, there's some very, very generic statements that the planning board uses to extract information from the applicants. Some of which they never truly believed, and this is all assumptions, so please correct me if I'm wrong, they never truly believed the verbiage of the ordinance allowed the planning board to request and require some of the things. So it was, it was a lot of, okay, show me where it says that. And I, I now have a dual function for the city, I'm code enforcement and planning. So, in the code enforcement world, if I can't find it in a book, I don't say it, because that's, I can only enforce what's written. So I am one that loves specificity, because I can point it out to a book and say, this is what you have to show on your plan, because it says it on page nine halfway down. So I love specificity. I'm not going to sit here and say that everything in here is perfect, because it might not be. I'm not an industry expert on some of this matter. We relied on people that were. So I'm not going to say that everything in this ordinance is perfect, because it might not be. It might be, it might not be. But I am a strong believer in specificity. And while this is a long ordinance, there are a few things that are repeated more than once, we, we, we might be able to clean it up a little bit. But I would love to keep an ordinance that is pretty specific. So there is no black and, I'm sorry, no gray. It's, it is black and white. Part of the problem, I, I was told that some of these five-year permits were costing $50,000 to $100,000 for these guys to, to go through the process every five years.
$200,000, right here.
How much?
$200,000.
$200,000, every five years. Talk about driving up the cost of the...
It wasn't always like that. We've been through two of them before that were simple. I mean, like, that, I think that's the problem, is that...
First of all, I have to make the comment that Dave and the industry are on the same page. We want to protect the water. There is no, there is no, there's no change, there's nothing about what we do that doesn't want to protect the water, because we want to protect our resource. Our resource is the sand and gravel. If we foul the water, we don't get the sand and gravel. Just like you were talking about, the investments that, that businesses make, you have a financial incentive. There is no better incentive than the financial incentive of the millions of dollars that we've invested in the property and the equipment to do the work that we do. I'm not saying that everyone, everywhere, but what I'm saying is, since the DEP passed the ord, the, the law changed in the state of Maine in 1994, 95 maybe, you look at the compliance rate of our industry, and it's exemplary. It, it is exactly what it should be. They spend the time with the bad actors. There are bad actors in our industry, but you won't find them in Sanford, and you won't find them in Gorm, you won't find them in Buxton, you won't find them around our area, because we're sophisticated, we know what we're doing, we do it well. Deputy Mayor Hurley, he mentioned the number of pages of those ordinances in those surrounding towns. Sanford is blessed with a ton of natural resources. So are many of the other towns around. You go to Buxton, Gorm, where we have operations as well, you'll find 10, 12 operations there, and they've got a three, four-page, five-page ordinance with very little non-compliance, very little if any, because we know what we're doing, we do it well. That's the comment that I have there. As to, you know, Jamie mentioning, you know, experts being involved in, in this process, which experts? I'm, I'm, I'm curious about that, Jamie. You and I get along really, really well, and I really appreciate the way you approach your job. But we tried to introduce experts to this. I don't know which experts you're talking about.
I'm referring to Dave, to be honest with you.
Right. Dave is an absolute expert, I agree with you. I would not, but every time, we tried to say, hey, why don't we get a geologist in to speak to the group? Why don't we get the DEP to come in and talk about what their standards really do, and what their, what each and every one of their terms means, and how, and why you would, why you would need to change any of that. Part of the definitions that you have in this tweak what the standard, known, industry-accepted definition is of particular words. And that's very difficult, because for decades, since 1995, we have a document that we go by in the state of Maine that defines these things as this. And now, we've got, well, if you go to Sanford, it means this. And that's very difficult, because when you're trying to have a, an intelligent discussion to educate somebody, or have a discussion with somebody, and the term means one thing to me, and a little bit different to Jamie, because he works in Sanford and Sanford only, it gets, there gets to be a divide, and it, and it concerns me greatly, that, that we're not starting with those, that information and working from there. I could go on and on and on, as Steve will tell you, and I'm not going to, right? But, but it's very important to me, the experts that we're talking about didn't get an opportunity to come in. And we're talking about independent experts that have no, no fight, no, no dog in the fight. Again, Dave's an expert, but his dog in the fight is exactly what he says it is, and he, he doesn't hide that, and I appreciate that very much. He wants to protect the water for the, for the citizens of the city of Sanford. We agree with that, we support that. Everything we've done at our gravel pit, anytime we have an issue, I call Dave. There's nothing to hide. It's, it's the best way to have that relationship. But there are experts out there that could weigh in on a ton of different things that would require you not to become experts on it. I don't expect anybody to become an expert. I don't want to be a chiropractor. I'm not, I mean...
She doesn't want to either.
I don't want to either.
Right, okay, well, okay, good, right.
Meals at our house are very boring, because they're all chiropractors.
All right.
I got to tell you.
But if I need one, I, I don't need to know how you do your magic, I just need to know you do your magic. That's what I care about.
Bill's getting a compliment.
Hold on one moment. Erin, we're going to put you on the spot.
That's great. So I think, as you know, I was not here during the initial workshops that drafted this ordinance. As far as specificity goes, I mean, I think the more details you have in an ordinance, the less relearning that has to happen with every turnover that happens on this council and on the planning board. So putting that effort in upfront, and putting details in, I mean, I don't know if this was started from the Augusta ordinance, I don't know if they brought in experts to draft their ordinance, and then we built off that. So maybe there were experts involved, but I'm not sure. I do think that the, there's an inherent amount of knowledge that you have to understand upfront, and that by having that written into the ordinance, you maybe save some time down the road by not having to relearn that every time there's a new position filled. I think, based on other ordinances that I have been working on, that we've heard from, we've, we have heard from many people that more details are needed, that they want to we have heard from many people that more details are needed, that they want to see, you know, the planning board wants clear direction as to what they're allowed to weigh in on and not. And they even more so feel the need to allow the staff to use their expert opinion. So if that's written in here in an ordinance, like Jamie said, he can refer to a book, and we can give an answer without having to wait to get on the agenda of a site plan review committee, and then wait for two more weeks and get on the agenda of the planning board meeting in order to get your answer. If it's in the book, we can tell you that day. So, I mean, there's, obviously, it's a long ordinance. I think if you look at just the mineral extraction, it's about sixteen pages, which I agree is still long. But it's not the twenty-six pages that this, you know, there's several sections in here that we're updating. It's not just, there's the mineral extraction ordinance, there's also definitions, there's the site plan review chapter, there's different chapters that need updates, because this is such a large lift. But the actual mineral extraction is about sixteen pages.
Okay. Any questions of her? All right. Yes, Dave?
Yeah, just, I'd like to revisit the experts question. I love it when people call me an expert, but I don't consider myself one, because when I get a question, I very quickly reach out to somebody who I consider an expert. And we did bring in some people that I consider the foremost experts on both water and geology in the state of Maine. That was Dr. Bob Marveney, who used to be the head of the Maine Geological Survey. And is, happens to be a friend of mine. He has retired since then. We brought in Dr. Ryan Gordon, who also works for Maine Geological Survey, and is probably the second foremost expert in my mind on geology in the state of Maine. I brought in Andy Tolman, who also is retired. A lot of these guys who were at the top of their field when we started this process have now retired. Susan Bro from the Maine Drinking Water Program, Dave Brayley from the Maine Drinking Water Program. And those last two were actually the experts we brought in when there was the question of how far should you be from a private well. These two people were actually involved in the decision that set those limits and gave a very good explanation. And it's a tough one. It's people sitting around in a room, very, very intelligent people, talking about specifics of transmissivity, and how far you should be from a drilled well, and how far you should be from a dug well. And in the end, they kind of made a common sense decision that, you know, that the hundred feet was fair for a drilled well, and the two hundred feet was fair for a dug well. And with a normal dug well and average conditions, you'd be okay with that. Their explanation was better than that, and I brought it to the group, and they brought those back into the DEP standards. So there were experts that were brought in along the way. And the other thing I'd like to say is, and sometimes there isn't recognition of that, when there's an expert right under your nose. But we had Steve Buck on there, who is an expert in municipal law and in municipal ordinances. We also had Beth Delavalli, who some people don't tend to put down, but, and you may not always agree with her or her opinions, but she was an expert and a consultant in her former life before being here in municipal ordinance planning and municipal law. So, and you have Jamie, who's been a code enforcement officer forever. So, did you have experts? I think you did. I think you had good people writing it. Did you have an expert in writing gravel pit ordinances specifically? No. You probably didn't, but you didn't do this devoid of any knowledge and devoid of people who knew what they were doing. You had people that knew what they were doing. And it was done specifically for a reason, so. So you can call me the expert, but I brought in some much better experts than me.
Okay, thank you.
Just to clarify, what I meant by experts involved, we're at the task force, there were no experts that came in. Nobody made a presentation. We made that offer multiple times. Dave did definitely reference to and reach out to experts. But even the documents or the answers that he got were not presented to the group for discussion. It was presented, here it is, this is the answer, this is what they gave me. And then the drafter of the ordinance took that information and put it in the ordinance. There was no discussion back and forth from another expert. We took the, and again, I wasn't really expecting that, but I was not expecting that we wouldn't, as the task force, wouldn't have the opportunity to bring people in that knew far more than I do, or Dave, or other people, to help balance that discussion and that thought process, that we would come up with an ordinance that... Yeah, I'm not looking for an ordinance that's all gravel pits all the time, and we get to do whatever we want. But I'm also not looking to be under the thumb of every whim of what somebody thinks we should operate under. And that's why there's, you know, I'm searching out ordinances as we talk, because, you know, the same thing. I'm looking up, we work under the Gorham ordinance every day, all day. It's very simple. You can read it and understand it. I challenge every one on this council to read one of those other ordinances and tell me how hard it is to understand in comparison to the ordinance that's proposed, and tell me why they have no problems, and call them and ask them. But they, people who were drafting didn't want to do that. They wanted to take the most difficult, onerous ordinance they could find in the state of Maine and start with that. And that's what they did, and that's why we have the document we have. We're gonna operate our gravel pit regardless, but it doesn't need to be this difficult. It doesn't need to be that difficult for the planning board. When somebody comes in front of them, there are simpler ways to do this. I encourage you to consider that, and how hard it will be on every board and every board member that reads this and has to try to understand it, and a planner that has to deal with it, and a code enforcement officer that has to deal with it, and a city manager that has to, if any level, anything rises to their level, how they're gonna deal with it. There's a simpler way.
So Mark?
Yes.
Their contention, and what they're saying, I don't mean contention in a bad way.
Yeah, no, no, I understand.
Is that the more complex it is, and the more it's detailed, the less problems they're gonna have being able to point to what is necessary, because they're afraid that one of you is gonna say, well, it's not in the ordinance, so why do I have to do it? Or the planning board is gonna wanna weigh in on things that they shouldn't weigh in on, because it's not in the ordinance, and so they wanna, you know, dig at it.
Yep.
Do you see what I'm saying?
I do understand, and I can explain why that's, why they're using that terminology. The reason they're using that is because prior to the previous planner being here, five-year renewals and were a fairly simple operation. We came in when we bought the gravel pit and did an ownership change. Jim Gelnack put us through the process. It was fairly simple. Two years later, the five-year permit for, or five-year permit that we had was coming up for renewal. We came in, we presented the exact same information that they did five years prior, updated where we were working, turned it in, went to the planning board, one meeting, approval, done, walked out of here. Spent maybe, we spent three thousand dollars, I'd be amazed. The next time we came in, I doubled the amount of time, just thinking I was getting ahead of things, presented the exact same information, saying this is where we are, this is what we're doing. The term renewal became new application. I can't tell you the number of times I received an email, said, "We're treating this as a new application." I said, "It's not a new application, it's a renewal." The example I'll give on renewal is simple. You have a driver's license. When you get a notice in the mail, it says you need to get your driver's license renewed. Do you have to take the driver's test again? No, you do not. You simply go in, present the valid license, give them the information, why about your height and weight again? Tell them you wanna use the old picture. They issue you a new one, you pay a fee.
I've tried the old picture multiple times.
Right, I'm still working on the old picture. And that's, it was the, the reason the specificity was asked for is because we had a situation where they were just pulling things in and saying, you had to do all this stuff. And we'd say, well, where does it say in the ordinance that we have to do that? We've never had to do that before. We don't understand. We don't do it in other towns. And that's where the cry for specificity came from. It didn't come from, because we don't understand. It came from, we felt like we were getting just bombarded with this stuff. And when Matt says that he spent two hundred grand, I can tell you, we spent a hundred grand. It's not how it should be. There's way simpler ways to do this. I can't say that enough. I've said too much. I'm gonna go sit down, because Larry wants to talk.
So I actually have a question for you. So the Gorham ordinance, does that mostly point towards the Maine DEP rules?
Nope. So the way it works, Maine DEP has the minimum standard you can operate a gravel pit in the state of Maine, right? And then every town, as we know, gets home rule and can add, or, you know, they can't go less than that. So if the minimum setback is fifty feet, you can't go less than that without meeting criteria. And they add to all of it. There are, I don't know, I'm gonna guess, are there a dozen gravel pits in the, and a couple, three quarries in the town of Gorham? You call up the code enforcement officer, or call, you know, the head of planning, they'll tell you, they don't have much of an issue with it at all. They don't, we've got some of the biggest operations that exist in this state, in the town of Gorham. Their ordinance is simple, easy to understand. I went to high school. I'm not a lawyer, right? I mean, I've got a high school education. I can read that ordinance front to back. I can read the DEP ordinance front to back, understand it, apply the standard, and be in compliance. It's simple. This ordinance is going to make it more difficult, because it grants power where the power doesn't need to be. Again, the setbacks, the few things that I mentioned, you know, the fact that it says in there that you shouldn't be able to see the extraction footprint from three hundred feet away in the woods. Okay, what do you do if you have to?
Yeah, and I think I saw something about plants in there around your entryways or something along those lines, too.
You know, there's just these things that just don't need to exist, because I believe in property rights. I believe that you have property rights. I believe that my property rights and where your property rights begin, right? Whatever I'm doing on my property should not make it so your property is not enjoyable. I agree, the noise, the dust, the things that happen in our industry, we need to control those, the visual. Everybody doesn't love it. Like I said, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, right? I see gravel pit, I see beauty. Somebody else might not see the same thing, but I know it's necessary, and I know that if we do it right, we can protect all of the natural resources that exist while still doing business and making these things happen that need to happen. Tommy said it the best. We're good guys in a dirty industry. I mean, it just is what it is, you know what I mean? Like, and if you've got bad players, that's why you have people like Jamie, and you've got people like Steve Buck, who can put the hammer on them. There's ways to do it. The ordinances in other towns allow it. This ordinance definitely allows it. The current ordinance allows it, but it's a little goofy. There are way better ways to do it. I would encourage you, I mean, and I hate to say this, but I would encourage you to take this ordinance, roll it up, and say, not now, not today. Get somebody, get somebody independent who wants to draft an ordinance that makes sense for both the city, Jamie to enforce, and us to comply with. That's, I mean, I don't think you should waste another minute on this ordinance. I really don't. And I'm sorry to say that. I've got years of my life and time away from my kids. I missed a soccer game and a field hockey game tonight. Bad news, Sanford lost.
Ask him.
Yeah, it was seven to one.
Both teams lost?
The girls' soccer team in Gorham won, and the girls' field hockey team won. Seven to one and three to one. But those, yeah, I know, sorry. Don't hold that against us. I know, I agree. I don't play field hockey, girls' soccer, just so we're clear. But, and I hate to say that, because I've got so much time in this, and Steve's got a ton of time. Jamie's got, I mean, we've all got a ton of time in it.
So somebody mentioned earlier, and I think it might have been you, that you didn't get that three weeks that you were expecting to kind of go over and review this and provide some, what you feel like would be, you know, considerable constructive feedback. If we gave you that time, do you think you'd be interested in taking a look at this and providing that? Or are you pretty much saying, no, we don't want this?
I would, I think, I mean, I don't wanna, see, the problem is, is you've hit us at the toughest time, right? When we were going through the ordinance before, it was wintertime. And that's what we were going into wintertime, and we thought we were gonna get three weeks, and we'd be sitting at our desks, and the days are getting shorter, and now we're at go time. So if you wanted that, what I would say is, spend long enough.
Push it out.
Push it out to right after Christmas and say, you know, or first of the year, our comments are due, and any proposed competing ordinance, let us submit all the comments. We'll do, I would do both. Would you guys, I mean, I hate to commit, what do you, I would rather...
Oh, I always volunteer my friends for stuff, so feel free.
Well, I call it voluntold.
Feel free to do it.
Voluntold is what I call it, yeah, so...
Chris's girls are all grown.
Right. I mean, I really should let Larry, I mean, I comment on that. Larry's been a leader of the pack when it comes to that stuff. I'm just, I'm just his minion when it comes to that.
No, I'm just, I'm just hearing that, you know, I think we're all on the same, mostly on the same page about, you know, we wanna protect the water, people's property rights. Some of this may be redundant, may be a little over the top. I see things about potential wells that kind of concerns me, that I'd like to get some more information on, because I don't know what exactly that means. Because that, is that well three hundred feet from any property line, you know? So I think those kind of things are some of my concerns. And I'd love to see you guys have a chance to provide the input that you were expecting to be able to provide on this. So that's just something I was curious about.
And I have to say that when I read it, I had to read it three times. And I have several degrees, and I found it difficult. I, and I'll be very honest, I found that the knowledge in here was good, but it was, it felt like it was scattered. Like I couldn't, sometimes I couldn't figure out what went with what. And I kept thinking, well, maybe that's because I don't know the business. But I figured the third time through, I should have understood it a little better than that. And Steve's explanation was actually the, I have a better grab on it now, because of his explaining stuff.
Agreed.
You know, so it was much better. But I do think that we need to trust the planning board more, that they can make decisions, even if it isn't in writing, because it's not like codes. He has to have those, so maybe this is an overkill. We need to figure out how to simplify it, so it's, you know, readable anyway.
And applicable. I mean, that, make it so they can apply it to each and every plan that comes in. Again, the biggest cost to us was that five-year renewal, when the point that was made to us over and over again is that this is not a renewal, this is a new application. And it's like, it's a continuing operation. It can't be treated as a, and I think that's the hardest point, is that it wasn't, we were never looked at as though we were an ongoing operation. It was always as though, here you are, stop where you are right now, tell us where all your stockpiles are, tell us where your open area is, bring it in, hand it to the planning board, and then tell us what you're gonna do over the next five years. Tell me what, we would try to explain to the planning board and the planner that I don't know what the market's gonna call for over the next five years. I can't tell you where I'm gonna put stockpiles, because I don't even know it's a naturally occurring product. Over here in the bank, you might have a sandy material, over there it might be a rocky material. If the, if the demand for rocky material is higher over the next five years, I'm going that way. I need the rock. If the demand is higher for sandy material, I'm going that way. I can't, and then I'm gonna stockpile it where it makes sense, as close to the operation as I possibly can. The more we touch it, the more we move it, the more it costs. The more it costs, the more it costs the next person. So if you tell me, which we done, we have to stockpile all of our asphalt and concrete outside of the wellhead zone. Now, the well didn't come in till after we were already in operation, but we worked with Dave to make sure we added cost. We're thousands of feet away from our main operation to stockpile that material.
It's the alley.
Okay, I don't know if we were haunted.
It's screaming. It's screaming.
Yeah.
It's on what? It's outside?
Sign down there, it says you have to wear profanity.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, it's definitely there. Okay, good.
What makes you donuts at four? She uses the profanity.
And there's things like that throughout the ordinance, that in the end, nobody's ever come out to check where our stockpile is. Nobody's ever asked for a report to find out how much material we processed during the five-year period. So there's all these things that are required in the ordinance that nobody's looking at. Jamie doesn't have time to check. He wouldn't even know, I mean, nothing against Jamie, but he wouldn't know if we're following it to a T, or, you know, when you're looking at a thirty-acre, thirty-acre open area, if we've moved it two hundred feet, it's hard to discern if you've moved it two hundred feet, right? I mean, you just, without GPS equipment, and those are the types of things that, it's a dynamic operation. It's gonna change every day. So I think you read, the last example I'll give is whoever drafted that ordinance is concerned about sediment and stormwater. Imagine a gravel pit is almost always an internally drained bowl. It's a bowl. Nothing gets out of it. The only water that gets in is the water that falls from the sky. We're not, we don't have stormwater leaving our site. You might have the roadway that you have to worry about. I get that, that makes sense. But once you've, once you're in that bowl, you've got no sediment, and you've got no stormwater runoff. It's the best possible, even Dave will tell you, managed correctly, the gravel open to the rain is the best filter he's gonna get. And he doesn't want too much of it, but he also doesn't want the organic matter on top, which is gonna drive that down in and contaminate his wells. We coexist quite well. And that ordinance doesn't understand that. It doesn't understand it. It doesn't, it doesn't see it the way that it really, any operation actually operates.
I have a question for you, seeing as you're such a great... I have a question for you, seeing as you're such a great spokesperson for your industry.
Reluctantly. Larry's better than I am. Yeah, Larry's better than I am. Best for last.
All right.
I told you, I'm confident he talks a lot.
He does talk a lot.
Sorry.
He does. I do know in a lot of other industries, and I will use chiropractic because that's one I'm very familiar with, we have an oversight group that if a doctor goes astray, they're reeled in pretty fast, to the point that they will be penalized, up to the point of losing their license for six months, losing it for a year, you know, I mean, it's a pretty stiff penalty. As an industry, what do you have in place separate from this group? Or what is in place that you come in and you oversee?
There are three things that I would say. One is DEP, and you've heard that maybe some people don't trust the DEP quite as much. But what I would say is, don't focus on the overall DEP. Focus on the department that's in charge of us. You will find experts that are singularly focused on what we do and understand it quite well, have been at it for decades. So, there's one. Two, we have people just like Jamie who can see all kinds of things. We've got planning departments and that kind of stuff. And there should be, we're not saying there shouldn't be teeth. There should absolutely be teeth. We don't want bad actors, just like you don't want the bad actors in your industry. We don't want them in ours. The third is Maine Aggregate Association. There is an association that we belong to that we, they meet at least once a month, if not more. It's constantly looking at what legislation is out there, what new technology is out there, how to best comply with that stuff. And each year, at our meeting, we have the DEP come in and do a report on what they did to interact with aggregate producers and that kind of stuff. And they'll tell us what the enforcement actions look like, who they enforced against on a ten-thousand-foot level. They don't normally name names. But the one thing they will do is they will tell you exactly what the percentage was overall for the enforcement action. So, what are the things that people are messing up for on our industry? But then they'll tell you, of the Maine Aggregate Association members, this is what the percentage was. And where our compliance rate in Maine Aggregate is through the roof. I mean, very rarely do we get cited for things. And if we do get cited for things, we clean them up, take care of them immediately because that's the type of thing, we don't want to be out of compliance. There are, it's just, there's no incentive to be out of compliance. Our industry is very concerned with that stuff. And I know, we don't write ordinances for the best actors. We write ordinance for the worst actors, right? And so, that's where we're all in favor of the teeth because we're not worried about the teeth. But what we are worried about is the cost that it, I mean, a hundred thousand, two hundred thousand dollars every five years makes no sense. But again, it's the interpretation of what that five-year renewal really means. Because we've been through it, each one of us have been through it before, and we hope to go, only go through this one more time, get an approval, and move on. The problem is, is that there's going to be more gravel pits approved in Sanford. There's still land in Sanford that still has gravel on it, and somebody's going to come in. Because we are an existing operation, we're going to get that, even if you pass this ordinance, we get grandfathered. Grandfather isn't even a term that she likes anybody to use, I'm sure. But if you get a new gravel pit to come in, this is a very onerous piece of ordinance. It's not going to be easy for a new gravel pit. All you're doing is driving my competition out. I should be here advocating for it. Drive the competition out, price goes up, we make more money. But that's not how we do it. I mean, as you see, I sit here with competitors that I consider friends. We want the best for our industry, we want the best for the city.
All right, thank you. I think, Larry, are you waiting to speak?
Jamie.
Jamie, go ahead.
I just wanted to add a number four to what Mark just said. Part of this ordinance provisions is we're going to get rid of our five-year permit because we all agree that that is expensive, onerous, and unnecessary if done properly. We are going to charge a yearly license fee that is based upon a third-party inspector. So, as your lead inspector, I agree. I don't have the equipment available to me. I don't have the time or the resources to do a proper inspection of the gravel pits. I admit that. So, my solution to that isn't asking you guys to buy me fifty thousand dollars worth of equipment. It is to say, "Okay, our license fee is going to cover a third-party inspector that at least once a year is going to go into every one of our gravel pits." And they are going to measure the open pit area, whichever definition we want to use. They are going to measure the depth of the floor, and we are going to be able to find minor infractions when they're still minor. So, as your code officer, that, I love that. Because sometimes, we're doing it every five years. They don't necessarily know that they might be out of compliance till they hire their surveyor to come out and get the elevation of the pit floor. Whereas if we're doing that yearly, we can find it when maybe they're a foot off and not five feet off. So, I think one of the most important parts, whatever we do with the ordinance, I would love to keep the, get rid of the five-year permit, make it a once-and-done sun plan, and keep that annual inspection, annual license fee to pay for that inspection.
Sounds like the industry wants that too, Jamie.
Is that something we all agree on? Everybody in the room? The annual licensing, the way it's written in this ordinance?
And...
The way it's written in this ordinance?
Hold on a second. And Jamie, just in case you don't know, they do now have those little flying cars. So, they're seventy thousand dollars, so you might think about putting that in your budget.
I'll put that in this year's CIP budget request.
Okay. All right, Larry, come on down. Okay. And Larry, you've been very patient. You look so relaxed back there.
Not a problem, not a problem.
I didn't even think you were going to talk.
No, 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 just patience is a virtue. So, Larry Grandin, R.J. Grandin's sons, based out of Gorham, third-generation family-owned business. We've been operating a gravel pit in Sanford since the early nineties, maybe even late eighties, when I was still just growing up. And still owner-operator of a pit. So, I will try not to repeat a bunch of stuff, but I would, and I know you want specifics. I know that's where we started, but we've kind of regressed a little bit. But I think a little bit of history would be prudent for this group. And I appreciate the council taking up this very important topic. So, yes, this started with industry saying, "We want to be done with the five-year thing, and in exchange, come inspect us." Because it just wasn't really happening, just, so the five-year renewal was the inspection. Well, that doesn't happen in any other town, really. Like, we're used to an annual inspection or an inspection every other year, whether it's from DEP or from the town, and often both. So, I'm going to try not to, you know, pound on that. But then Pandora's box kind of got opened up, and here we are today. So, historically, as Mark already stated, again, I'm not going to dwell on it, but twenty years ago, five-year renewal was pretty easy. And then just got increasingly harder and harder and harder. And then that's when we said, "Look, we cry uncle, let's do away with it, let's change the ordinance." So, moving back to that, back in two thousand and twelve, I was involved with a very similar group in Lyman, different town, exact same thing. They had a three-year review, even worse. And we spent eighteen with the town council, planning board, and industry. And in eighteen months, we started and finished and rewrote that ordinance. And now, it's every other year, we have an inspection and got rid of that three-year renewal, done. And it's been great ever since, as far as I can tell. And call the code enforcement officer, see if they have any issues with it. But that was in, I think, ten years ago, exactly. So, it's as identical a situation as you could get. So, and that went well. So, yes, we asked for more specifics, but as Jamie said, we have a current two-page ordinance. Now, it's sixteen, twenty-six, whatever the number is. We'd like it somewhere in the middle, okay? And then, kind of going back in history a little bit more again, referring to the Augusta ordinance. So, when, back in the, I've been involved with the Maine Aggregate Association since the early two thousands. So, in the mid-two thousands to late two thousands is when Augusta rewrote their ordinance. And it was kind of a knee-jerk reaction to kind of bad actor quarry guy and also this big giant development that was going on with huge amounts of blasting. And then, of course, everyone's freaking out, legislators, and blah, blah, blah. So, it went from a kind of normal ordinance to kind of wild. And, you know, Maine Aggregate monitors that stuff. They don't do local fights, but, you know, when that was all going down, we're like, oh, Jesus, isn't... It was really a knee-jerk reaction. So, to model, what I feel to model that is probably the worst ordinance in the state. So, I think, I'm used to Gorham. We're based in Gorham. We have three pits in Gorham. And is it the best ordinance? Eh, you know, some of their buffers are a little bit bigger than, say, Stanish. We have a pit in Stanish. But, so, back to your specifics. A three-hundred-foot buffer from just the edge of a property, not a well. So, there's two different buffers. Well, there's multiple buffers. Okay, so, I think some of, most of the buffers that I think we're talking about with the wells specifically are okay. We don't want to contaminate anybody's well, period. A three-hundred-foot buffer from the edge of a property is nowhere in Maine except Augusta. Okay, I think Gorham is one-fifty. Stanish is a hundred, just from the edge of a property line, separate from the wells, all right? Two different buffers we're talking about. So, three hundred feet from the edge of a property and then having to maybe plant more trees, which is, I've never seen in any ordinance, in any town we've dealt with. We've pit in Canton, pit in Stanish, Scarborough, Gorham, never seen that. So, that's a very specific thing that we don't want. Because we don't see it anywhere else. It's not in DEP, it's not in any other town. And the potential well thing, potential being, we've already talked about it, but that is a big beef. Existing, sure, no problem. If it's there, not a problem. Potential, big deal. That was my biggest thing. I wanted to give a little history and then a couple specifics because that's what you wanted. Any questions?
Any questions?
Sorry. I mean, this, Kate just came up with some of the stuff you were talking about. And you talked about the difference between the five-year renewal and one-year renewal. And that's good for everybody. But also, the fact that you're being, I'll just use the term inspected as a layman. So, you're being inspected every year. How many problems that we're talking about here tonight? Now, I know you're talking about buffers and potential wells, it's not going to solve that. How many problems does that annual one-year inspection solve? So, it makes maybe other parts of the ordinance not relevant or overkill or however you want to express it. You may not know the answer to that now.
Yeah.
But I think we're missing some middle, we're, there's a lot of middle ground here, I think.
Understood, understood. I'll kind of answer your question. Yeah, I'll kind of answer your question with a question. If you're looking at something annually, boots on the ground, as opposed to every five years, what do you think's going to happen?
Well, it's going to save, it's going to save you money. It's going to save your money, you money, probably the city money. It's going to fix problems before they become acute, let's say.
Correct.
And everybody's willing to do that.
Yep.
So, how does that affect, I have number one, your number one concern in this is the buffers. Does having the one-year renewal solve anything with these buffers?
Well, I mean, it could. I mean, it's not going to change the standard. I mean, this is where your buffer is, that's where it needs to be. Sure, if you catch, if, say, we're going fifty feet into the buffer, and if only one year goes by, hey, what are you doing? Fix it. But if five years go by, and I'm just a bad actor, I might be all the way to the line.
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not going to do that, but...
Right, and I don't, I don't think...
But you get my point, is if you're going to see it more often, so, we've found that that's the best.
So, you know, I think one of the things that we might consider here as a group is, are there problems that are solved in other areas, like within one-year inspection that maybe become not as relevant before? With regards to buffers, is there any consensus what those buffers should be? Should they be a hundred and fifty feet, not three hundred feet? Should they be fifty feet, not two hundred feet, or whatever? What, is there a consensus on that?
The most common around Cumberland and York County are a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet, period.
That's where both...
And I can give you example after example.
Where both, what they call it, point wells and dog wells.
I'm talking specifically about sidelines of property lines.
We agree on the wells.
I think the wells were in pretty good shape. Wells, there are bigger buffers.
Hold on, and this is fine. I'm confused because you're telling me you got a problem with buffers, but then you're okay with the wells. Aren't the wells related to...
It's tied to another property line.
Yeah.
Say it again? I'm sorry.
Yes, the buffer from another property line is different than a buffer around a well. Actually, so if you had a, if you had a property close by, you first have to stay, okay, we'll stay a hundred and fifty feet from your property line. But then you look and they have a well on their property line.
Right.
And you go, oh, no, we got to go three hundred because they have a well on their property line. So, you default to the path of great urgency, I guess?
But that, to me, doesn't sound like that's all that hard a problem to solve.
No, no, we agree.
You know, so, okay, planting trees and other stuff, you don't like it because nobody else does it. That's what I heard. And I heard the earlier comment that, yeah, the leaves fall off and you can see more. I mean, really, we can work that out.
Sure.
Maybe, I don't know, do pine trees. Do pine trees instead of oak trees.
Honestly, trees will plant, replant themselves naturally if you just give it long enough and don't touch it and don't mow it and all that.
Yeah, just look at the circle.
So, again, talking about, right, talking about middle ground here, trees, plants, it's not that big a deal.
Sure.
So, and now, the potential well, the potential well, let's talk about that.
Yeah. Who knows? Anywhere you could put a well, potentially, right? So, if it's existing, sure. Here's the mark, here's my setback, I know what it is, black and white, done.
I think we all agree that that wording was not appropriate.
Right, and like you said, if it's currently being permitted or something like that, then sure, have some setbacks there.
So, my point being, I think we're a hell of a lot closer than we think we are. And you hear specificity on this side for a reason because that's their job, is to enforce these things.
Correct.
And I understand you guys have to do business, and I'm not, I'm not anti, I'm not anti-anything here. I'm just trying to make a point that I don't think we're as far off, maybe, as everybody thinks we are. And I think we need to do a better job, maybe find out what we agree on first. But it doesn't sound like we disagree. Okay, so, with this, it seems to me the only place we disagree on is on plants and trees significantly.
They've only given you examples, Bob. They're just using examples. They haven't, they haven't gone through the whole ordinance. They're asking for time to go through the whole ordinance.
Yeah, and I'm, and I'm okay with that.
So, you can't say that there's only two things they disagree on because they're only giving you examples.
There might be more.
I agree with that.
Okay, still, my point being...
Right, there are certainly some common...
We're not identifying, and I think this is what the mayor was trying to get at. We're not identifying the things that we disagree on, nor are we identifying the things that we agree on. And that's, you know, simple, get in the same room with a specific checklist and let's go through and work through this stuff. And so, I do think we're closer than we think. I don't, I don't think it's perfect. There might be room for compromise, as I said. There's, I think there's room for middle ground, and I'm certainly willing to be, as myself, as a counselor, listen and be flexible. And I also respect the work that all the municipal employees have put into this. I'm on the zoning committee. I haven't put that much work into it, but I'm aware of it and have put work into it myself. And anyways, I think I've made my point that I don't think we need to throw everything out and start over again. I do think we have a good framework here we can hang and rearrange different things on.
I think Steve wants to speak, say it for your words.
Yeah, I've got a lot of notes, so it's going to, I'm going to bounce a little bit. So, my role is, as far as being the chair on the task force, was to be a neutral party. At least that's the way I viewed it, right? So, I come from industry. I think I'm... So, I come from industry, I think I'm fairly unique as a municipal manager. The first three, almost four decades of my life was a family agricultural operation, I still have that operation, it's still going. It's one of the most regulated industries that there is out there. I was under the Board of Pesticide Control, Soil and Water Conservation identifies us as point sources of phosphorus. I put in thousands and thousands and thousands of dollars of diversion ditches, sedimentation ponds, and everything else, be- because of that, all in the name of water protection. Uh, Pat helped pass the Right to Farm Bill, I had neighbors who complained about dust, chemicals, I had setbacks from wells, from my chemical use, uh, as a phased-out Timic, and all those other aspects. I know where the industry is, in relation to, ship to all of that, and I had that in my mindset, as being the neutral party, to balance off the right for the industry to, to do the work of the industry, extract the valuable resource that's there, but also on the, the protection of the water. I haven't heard anything tonight that isn't fixable, that isn't resolvable. So, in the document that I gave to the city council, I flagged all of those areas that I could identify, where we deviated from DEP. It's buffers and setbacks, buffers and setbacks, buffers and setbacks, buffers and setbacks. If we're not arguing extensively over the water setbacks, I think that's still an area of discussion, then you're back to the setbacks for visual impacts and other aspects. The world isn't broke, because of all of those. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll put the question out there for you. Please think about if you had other industry experts in here, and they gave their input, what would that change in address in the, in the draft ordinances before you, now? So, please think about that, when you, when you, when you come back with your, with your input. Is it again, around the setbacks and the buffers, as being unnecessary, you know, pursuant to the industry experts, that's the kind of input that I'd like to, to hear on this. Mark, you made reference to the Home Rule Authority of, of the municipalities. Yes, we can be more stringent than DEP. Um, and I think those only areas are setbacks and buffers, that's the only areas. We did talk extensively about being more stringent than DEP in a lot of areas, but we didn't go and try to redevelop those standards. That was, that was what ultimately ended out, uh, in here. I do note that, uh, there has been violations of operations here in our, in our municipality, and not once has anybody been shut down, to my knowledge, and not in the twelve years I've been here. Um, so, the trade-off in this is more accountability, more frequent inspection in addressing the element that might be in non-compliance, in pursuant to that inspection, not shutting the whole operation down, but having a greater ability there. And a lot of that shutdown has not occurred because of local politics. Period. The ability was there, but local politics prevents that. All right. Uh, reliance upon the state for oversight. How many inspectors do we have with DEP that are inspecting gravel pits statewide? Two?
Two or three.
Two, yeah. Yep. Um, my, my experience, so I'm, I'm sixty tomorrow. I have had a jaded history, jaded history with DEP, as far as their ability to, to inspect and comply with anything. I've been through two federal superfund sites, my hometown, the Eastland International Woolen Mill site, uh, DEP turned their head on that. They put water protection and the sewage disposal system in there for that industry in nineteen-sixty-seven. It resulted in a hundred-million-dollar superfund site, that was thrown in my lap, uh, as a municipal manager.
That's why we said concentrate on the actual, you know, by law conditions, you're not even a state, because I understand, you, you're best, and I, you are an independent, and you do a great job balancing that, Steve, but you also readily admitted that you're biased towards the DEP, and you understand why it's, it's...
I've got a long history there.
Right, we, I'm not...
Long history.
...familiar at all, but I would say, if you look at our industry, and how they enforce on our industry, you're finding, I believe, the record is quite, quite good. And they get, and they do their inspections, they're not sitting in the office, they're out doing it, we see them all the time.
Yeah, but they're not, it's, it's no different than, we work with the Sanford Housing Authority, they have HQS inspections that are pursuant to the federal standards, that they have to inspect, that is far different than what we have, as far as our standards are concerned.
And we don't wanna rely on the DEP to do the city of Sanford's inspections, we're not, we're not advocating for that at all.
We talk, you talked about technical capacities, uh, for the, the, uh, people that are, uh, members of the, the association here in the state, of having a very high technical capacity, uh, and such under that, but there are those operators that do not have a high level of technical capacity, and they need the specificity, specificity to lean on. I am an adamant supporter of the specificity that we have in here, for all of the reasons stated, from codes, planning, and everybody else. I think it's necessary, I think it's useful, and I don't find it derogatory towards the industry to have that level of specificity. Need to focus on what the compliance standards are, buffers and setbacks. Uh, Mark, you mentioned stockpiles, I think the important part, I referenced this earlier, is that the site plan, I know you can't tell me where they're gonna be over the twenty, thirty-year, forty-year period, but you simply have to delineate where they're not going to be, with the natural resources and, and, and other setbacks, whatever those are in the ultimate, uh, version of this. Yes, we did start with Augusta's ordinance, because it's a license, as opposed to, and we found some similarities there. It's pretty hard to find where Augusta is in here now, other than the three-hundred-foot setback that was referenced earlier. It's, it's unrecognizable, it's, it's, it's not the Augusta ordinance. Um, yeah, I'll, I'll, I'll let it go at that. I, but, but again, I appreciate the industry, the input from the industry, I don't, I haven't heard anything that's not unresolvable yet, that can't be a simple examination of the setbacks, the buffers, and other areas, uh, as being addressed, and I think it's readily fixable after that.
Thank you, Steve. Okay, I think it's probably time to hear from each of the counselors, and what you think the next steps are. Um, and it could be anywhere from, I heard the industry say right now, they are extremely busy, and it isn't until the first of the year, that you kinda have a slow-up, where you could spend time dealing with this. So, we could do everything about doing nothing, until the first of the year, um, giving them time to work on it, um, or we could, all the way to bring in this before the city council for a vote. So, those are the two ends of the spectrum. So, um, I know sometimes people don't like to share, but I'm gonna call on each one of you this time to say, what is your thinking, and, um, where do you think we need to move to? So, Nate, as the new guy, I'm gonna start with, see, that's the problem with being a newbie, you know?
I know, I know. So, what I'll say is, I, I have to sort of relate it to what I know myself. Um, you know, we've talked about, you know, none of, none of us are in the, in the industry that you all are. First of all, thank you all for coming in and speaking, you know, not, you know, both people who are in the, in this industry, Dave as well, Aaron and Jamie, and everyone who's been working on this. I have to relate to what I know, and for all the, the comments about lawyers that happened today, I am a lawyer. So, I won't take it personally. So, in my own, and I, I will say, it wasn't the easiest statute to read, as being someone who's a lawyer. However...
Thank you, Nate, I really appreciate that.
Yes, yes, I see, you all get a confidence boost, it's great.
You're lucky, John.
Yes. I, I will say that, you know, specificity is important, because it's not just, you, I understand that all of you are in this industry now, you all work together, you have a great building relationship, and it's great, but as was said earlier, that it's not meant for the best actors, it's meant for the worst actors, slash, I, I consider it the future actors as well. People who maybe are just coming into this industry, need to have a little bit of guidance. And of course, our city will help with that, and then others in the industry would help with that. Um, but, I don't necessarily think we need to cut it down to two pages, or anything like that. I think there needs to be some guidance in, in, in the wording. But, just because it's specific, doesn't mean it can't be concise. There's some level there of getting rid of, you know, any sort of legalese that may come in, and make it easily accessible for people to read. I say that specificity is, is, is needed, but there's also going to be some gray area. We, we talked about black and white versus gray area, and there's actually gray area in the statute as it's written, you know, despite it being twenty-six, sixteen to twenty-six pages, there's discrepancy there. Uh, there is some gray area, like one noted, what area I saw was, Planning Department, Planning, uh, Board can make other recommendations as reasonably necessary, um, and there's some gray air in there, there's some examples, but there is still some gray, so there's always going to be some gray. In terms of what conditions need to be put in place, I think that, um, Sanford does have to direct its own goals, in terms of public health, and how that works, so, but at the same time, has to balance it with the industry standard, because, I'll just give an example, in my own line of work, I practice all over the state, and there's supposed to be this rule, it's called the Unified Rules of Procedure, but every county's different. You know, despite having the same standard there, everything's different, it makes it difficult. So, on some level, if we want businesses to come in from outside of Sanford to work in our, you know, mineral extraction, needs to have some consistency with the, the industry standard. But, keeping in mind, we have our own goals, we're not, you know, we, we are unique in some, in some aspects. So, in terms of where to go from here, I mean, if this isn't something that is necessarily urgent to, to enact, then I'm perhaps giving, not just, you know, people in this industry a chance, but anyone who's concerned, could make up some sort of, either competing ordinance, or some suggestions to it, and then, that way everyone's heard. I don't necessarily, it doesn't sound like this is something that has to happen immediately, I mean, there's some, you know, obviously, people are coming up with their own site plans, that, uh, five-year reviews in the future, but I would not be opposed to having further discussion, making sure everyone's heard. I know lots of discussion has been input, inputted, so I don't think we need to be dragging it out for another couple of years, or anything, but I think the proposal that was discussed about, you know, maybe the first of the year, something like that, is appropriate.
Thank you. Jonathan?
I'll be a little less wordy.
Well, he, he's a lawyer, come on.
He's a lawyer, so...
More lawyer jokes, okay, I get it.
No, appreciate that. Um, and I'll, I'll mirror some of the, some of the comments, I do appreciate everyone coming out tonight, um, and it is really helpful to hear from both the water district planning, the, 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 um, industry people. So, I guess my, my thoughts are, um, I'm fine with giving you guys, and anybody else who wants to comment, some time to review this, and come back with some, um, comments. Um, and I, I understand that it's a busy time of year, so I'd be fine with pushing it out to early next year. I think in the meantime, maybe as a council, we could potentially look at some of this stuff, to see if there's anything we wanna take out, like the fencing requirements and shrubs. Um, I'm not sure where that came from, whether that's coming from the planning board. Um, but I also know that, um, sometimes that gets a little out of control. I know that a local Baptist church was required to put some whiskey barrels out in front of their building for a while, so, um, I'm a little sensitive to that. So, yeah, I think, I think we can look at this more, uh, there's a little bit more time, I don't think it's super urgent, and I wanna make sure that we're striking the right balance, and not putting any unnecessary hardship on the industry, while still protecting our, our water and our wells, um, the city wells, as well as any of the private wells. So, thank you.
Anne?
So, I concur with the prior two council statements, and I'm willing to, um, grant additional time for work to be done. Um, just to speak in general, um, process, from a process standpoint, I think it's really unfortunate to spend almost two and a half years, um, for a task force, the amount of time that's gone into this, and to not be as, more of a consensus. So, it's, it seems, I would understand, a high level of frustration for everybody involved, that we're at this point, and this amount of time that's gone into it, and we're still, realistically, although Steve's saying, you know, we're not that far off, which I, I hope is the truth, but to have this level of disconnect between industry, in particular, because we had two industry members part of the task force, it, it feels concerning to me. Um, and I, and this follows, um, a Trails Committee task force, that also, I don't know operated successfully either, and so, I, I think maybe from a process, from a council standpoint, we need to look at, um, how task force, quote-unquotes, are being formed, um, council involvement in them, and how we can make them more successful.
Thank you, Anne. Maura?
Um, I, I agree with what you said, Anne, I totally agree. Um, I think, so I'm looking at this ordinance, and I wanna give them more time, I don't think they got the right amount of time, uh, where they received it and reviewed it, I kind of wish it had gone from the task force, back to a writing, back to the task force for agreement, before going to the planning board, but it went basically from the task force to the planning director, and that person worked it with the planning board, which felt like it went backwards. I think that's why that task force failed, because I don't think they followed through the ordinance to completion, before it was presented for review to the planning board. Um, so, all I'm gonna say is, when you overwrite something, because of bad actors, because of bad, you know, all sorts of bad things that you have history of, you write poor ordinances, you write poor, any sort of document. Back when we were writing the Sanford Charter in two thousand and two, um, there are all sorts of examples of bad administrators, bad selectmen behavior, bad warrant committee behavior, bad town meeting behavior, and we consistently pulled us, ourselves back from overriding that charter. We didn't do a perfect job, we were still trying to balance what people seemed to still want, which was the budget approval through the town meeting, and that process, but we were trying to make, like, we talked about the best administrator we had ever had, who took the bull by the horns, and was the leader that you needed, and you didn't have staff having not only that one person, but five Board of Selectmen members, and they felt like they had six bosses, not the one. And that was all the person-driven, the charter, you just, you have to make sure you make it strong enough, so that you give that authority, but it's the person who takes it and does it well by it, it's the council who takes it and allows the, that, w- we allow Steve to be the leader, and don't step into the middle of what he's trying to do as, as a leader, and just guide behind the scenes, which is our job, as elected officials, but there were, there were situations where selectmen were going down to town garage, trying to be the bosses of the people who worked at the town garage, because that's what they understood. So, when you overwrite, we, you know, we tried to, we, we had to pull ourselves back constantly from overriding for such a, situations like that, and I think, I'm a little afraid this is overwritten, for bad situations. And, um, I can see the handprints all over it, with, especially with the, the plantings and everything, it's just too much. And I think that's what we need to allow them time to take a look at, pull back from the too much, maybe we are closer than we think, maybe we're not. I'm kind of hoping Aaron can be a little bit of a guide, from finding where there might be some overriding that could be pulled back on, um, and then come up with something that's a mix, something that'll work for Sanford.
Thank you, Maura.
Basically, everybody's hitting it right. We wanna work with the industry, we don't wanna cost you guys jobs, we wanna work with Water Department, we don't wanna cost wells, or anything like that. So, we can work together, but right now, this specificity, or whatever the hell that word is... I'm gonna tell you right now, that's overregulation, and they're gonna give Sanford a black eye for more people coming in here, you're gonna cost jobs, and I'm not about that, I'm protecting the businesses that are existing, I know we got grandfather clause, but let's take it easy on the, the industries that are already here. No wells have been lost, they've told us, I've asked this, and, uh, and, and, you know, we wanna protect them. What is the position if you guys kill a well? What do you do now? That's, that's what I would like to know, what do you do? Like, if you...
Hey, Pete, we're not asking question, you're just giving your opinion.
Oh, okay.
Because now we're gonna back-tread, and we're gonna...
All right, I don't wanna back-tread, but I'm gonna say, we should definitely give the new city planner a try, I think that's probably a big part of this problem. And I, and I am throwing you in there to, to help us out, because I know you're good, and I think that you already know what you can do to, to, to fix a lot of this, and I can see it, and you're like, mm, I can, I know, I know you know exactly what to do. So, I'd like to give Aaron a try, and I'd like to have these people right here, give us, oh, she'll be fine.
I've got my poker for you.
And I'd like to have you guys have a shot at this, at the first of the year. And I think that's the easiest, the most responsible thing we can do.
Thank you, Pete. Bob?
I thought you were gonna skip me.
So I know the mayor wants to go home because she's tired, and I already talked quite a bit. So we've spent a lot of time on this, and I think it's gonna require more time. We can say, you know, we've got it mostly right, but there's still more right that has to, has to be done. So I'm certainly in favor of whatever the council decides to move ahead with providing the industry with more time, whatever that means. And I, I don't think we, we truly need to rush this, and I do think it's worth taking the time to, to try to get it right. You have to understand industry, that the council is elected by the people, the citizens, the voters. And we're here to kind of watch out for them. I mean, that's what they expect us to do, and I think that's what we're doing. We're not certainly anti-industry, and as I said, I think there's a lot of middle road that we can meet. But that's, that's our role over on this side, is, is to look out for the, for the taxpayers, basically. Because this will end up costing them money. Specific, I'm, I'm gonna mess it up too. That's the second time. I did it in your honor, Pete. Specificity there, took, took two bites at the apple. If not the language that's in there, then what language? Can that language be softened or clarified in some way? The other thing, I, you've heard from all the council members, including myself, and this is what really perked my ears up three, four years ago. Dave came to a zoning meeting, and we talked about water quality and the water quality issue. And I got a really quick education in water quality in, in the city of Sanford and how the potential was there for the, for the industry to impact water quality. I hear what you guys are saying, I believe you, I truly do. You know, if the governor came on and told us all to drive 55, if she came on TV and said, I want everybody to drive 55, it will save lives. And we, we just said, okay, you know, the whole citizens of the state of Maine, we're gonna drive 55. Drive 55 is an old term, coming from the 70s.
Jimmy Carter.
Maybe three of us who, who remember that, yeah. Drive, four, I guess, drive 55. Well, you know, everybody's not gonna do that, you know? Most people will do it because the governor asked them to, and it's the right thing to do. But you're still gonna have to have police on the highway and, and to save lives. So we've got to find a, a middle of the road around the water quality issue. If we have a bad actor that comes in, we have to be able to deal with that, we have to have the teeth to do that. But I think there's plenty of room here to do this. So I'm just, and I talked about the other things. One of the things we may want to consider, and we did this when we were working on the charter that, that Maura referenced, is we brought in a processor, we brought in a facilitator, and they put the issues.
I'm talking two charters ago.
Okay, well, this is two charters ago. Well.
Okay.
But we did a charter since then.
Yeah.
Or a charter renewal since then, so anyways. But you agree we did bring in, or we used a facilitator, you don't remember that?
We didn't in 2002. I don't remember the other one.
Okay. My suggestion, Mayor, should you choose to consider it, as an educator, I'm sure you've been in many workshops where a facilitator came in, addressed the issues some better than others. We looked at those issues, we discussed those issues, we ranked those issues, and we worked through those issues through discussion. I'm only saying that possibly in January or February, whenever we get together, that might be a consideration, a suggestion. And with that, I'll stop.
Thank you. So it is my job to say what everybody else said and come to a conclusion. So here is the deal. I believe that we all agree it needs more time. I don't think there's a question out there that this whole, whole council believes that. So knowing your busy schedules, it seems like everybody was pretty willing to move it into January, the first part of the year. The challenge is for you guys to take a look at this, work and see what you can handle, what you think is reasonable. Start to rewrite some of it. Aaron, I'm gonna dump this back in your lap to our favorite people, David and Jamie. They're wonderful to deal with though, aren't they? You don't mind working with them. And look at these guys over here, they're just so lovely. I want you to know that as a principal of a junior high and a high school, I would have little buggers come into my office who had done naughty things. And I always had to look at their kindergarten pictures. So I want you to know, every time I look out at an audience, I see you guys as kindergarteners. So. So, and that's, I do too, you too, Bob, although we're the same age.
I can probably get you one of Chris.
Okay. And I might have even had some of you in school. So that, that is a problem I always have. I just think of people as just being as cute as can be, and I just enjoy working with people. And listening to you guys, I was so impressed. You all stayed calm, which sometimes does not happen. You didn't throw any chairs, which sometimes happens in here. You were so polite and just delightful to hear from. So I want to thank you for that. And so it's, I think the agreement is that we are moving this to the end of January for us to come back together, and it might be whatever group you decide to work with in your group, and we get that together, and it might even be into February that we finally come to a conclusion. But this is giving us more time. Jonathan?
I just had a thought, can we send them like a Word document that they can put comments in that directly instead of having a bunch of emails or.
I think, I think we'll leave it up to them however they want to do it, because they know what their capabilities are. And Aaron kind of put her in the lead of this in knowing what to do.
People can convert from PDF to Word, I can.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, whatever works for them.
So are you, Larry? Larry, this better be quick.
Very quick. Simply a clarification for expedience of this process. So A, I think early January would be preferred, because it's already gonna be six weeks from now, right? Or no more than that.
Are you guys done your busy season by, that's what I was.
Well, yeah, but we, this has been a long process.
Okay, so the first part of January.
Let's get through the holidays, that'll give us time to do stuff. So, so that was my first comment. Second comment and final is, if we have a short list of things that, you know, we think some have stated tonight, would it be beneficial to forward them to Aaron and say, here's kind of our preliminary thoughts?
Yes.
At least so there's some sort of, yeah, we're not gonna send a 26-page document, but hey, here's a summary of what we're thinking. Is that helpful or not?
I think that is, and I think bullets are great too.
I love bullets.
Yeah, I do too. Very good.
It's November.
I think you can.
Just kidding, just kidding.
All right, Aaron's gonna want to get you off of her plate quickly, because she has other things.
Just wanted to clarify, thank you.
Absolutely. So are we all in agreement? We're in agreement as a council? I just want to ask, did you guys feel heard tonight? Okay, fantastic. I think it's very important to hear our businesses and our industry, so thank you very much. So I am now going to adjourn the meeting.